Are you ready to go? We're going to call the meeting of the board supervisors back to order. It is just after 1:30 PM. We were on a lunch break, so we'll take up item number 24. This is the appointment of Carson City, the three members to this Carson City Visitors Bureau. We have, I think...
Mr. Mayor, we have Diane in the room right now, so what I'd like to do is bring her up initially. We will bring the other candidates in the order that you specified.
Mr. City Manager, could I make a disclosure first and then...
Yeah, go ahead, because I think what... Hi Diane, bear with us just one second while we cross the Ts and dot the Is, okay?
All right.
I think Nick, what we'd like to do is we'll have come in the groups at their categories. So it'll be Diane and Jonathan, and then I think Stan Jones is the only applicant for at-large, and then Rob and Renee, the last, and then, because she's going to disclose and abstain. That way she only has to go out the door once, okay? All right, go.
I let the record reflect, I have delivered an opinion letter from the DA to Kathy, the clerk recorder. Renee Plain doing business as Inplain Site Marketing LLC is my paid website manager for Adele's and my reelection campaign. While I will not obtain any direct financial benefit from either a yes or no vote on this matter, I do have a commitment in a private capacity to Renee, and that some might say could reasonably affect my independent judgment. Therefore, I will abstain from the vote and will not participate or advocate on this agenda item with respect to other commercial interests seat on the Visitors Bureau Board, which Renee is competing for. However, if the mayor will call for the votes separately for each open seat regarding the three categories, I will vote on the other two appointments to be considered under this agenda item.
I think we can accommodate that. Is that all right? Everybody, board members are okay with that? Randy, okay? All right. All right, now you ready Diane?
I'm ready.
Okay, we have Diane Phillips before us. You have quite an impressive resume, a lot of time in the industry. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? I know we've seen your application. Tell us a little bit about yourself, when you got here, why you want to do this, and what do you think you can accomplish by doing it? And then I'll ask you some more questions.
All right, that's a loaded question. I recently moved to Carson City about three and a half months ago after I retired from law firm marketing. I worked for a considerable amount of time for the global hospitality director in the law firm that I worked for, who had the largest hospitality practice in the world. Not the only law firm that practices hospitality, but certainly the only one who had the breadth and strength of the practice and practices worldwide. His probably most well-known client is Donald Trump, and he did almost all of Mr. Trump's condo hotels throughout the world. I am recently retired. I'm trying to get used to not being quite so busy. It comes a little hard for me, and so I'm looking for volunteer opportunities in the community, this one with lodging, since I'm so familiar with the lodging industry. A lot of the lodging executives from all of the hospitality and hotel brands, I thought that that was probably perfect for me. I moved to Carson City because 40 years ago I bought an apartment building here and loved the community and knew that when I retired, I was going to return to Carson City to spend the rest of my life here.
Very good, and thank you for your investment 40 years ago, and thanks for coming back to our community. Just kind of to cap off, because what we do is kind of ask similar questions. What do you think you'd like to accomplish on being on the Bureau on the board?
Well, some of the things I've noticed in the time I've been here is how few three- or four-star hotels Carson City has. And the properties that are here are mostly independent, and it looks like they defer a lot of their maintenance. And so what I'd like to accomplish is to get people enthusiastic about coming to Carson City and staying in Carson City for their trips to wherever between California and Reno. And also, if it doesn't exist, I would like to put together a book of all of the properties and what they all have to offer, and also restaurants and everything that has to do with lodging and hospitality.
Who wants to start?
Hi Diane, you've sort of alluded to this, but I'm going to have you take it a little bit further. The CCCVB has chosen to focus primarily on marketing going forward, and to market not just one aspect, which was initially the VNT Railroad, but to market the town and its proximity to outdoor recreation, cultural activities, and recreation in general. If chosen, what new insight can you bring to the CVB's marketing directive?
Well, I spent a number of years as the marketing director for the law firm that I worked for in California, and one of the things that we desperately need is to get a website that addresses all of the great things that Carson City has going. I've seen most of the websites here, and there's always some improvement that can be done to these websites, and we don't have a comprehensive list of things that are available in Carson City for the visitor. I would really highly recommend, especially through talking to people on the phone and getting their input into what needs to be done here, would love to be a part of that marketing effort to build the Carson City brand, so to speak.
Hi Diane.
Hi.
I have a similar question to Karen's. My question is, how would you use emerging technology and social media to enhance and promote Carson City?
Well, I think Twitter, certainly. Facebook. I don't think Carson City has a presence on Facebook, but they may, and I haven't seen it. But I would use all of those web technology, social media to inform the world about the city of Carson City and what great things it has to offer and its beautiful quaint downtown areas, but I don't think I would stop at too many of them. I'm trying to think of Twitter. Carson City needs a Twitter account, and we can put out information to the rest of the world about the events that are going on and some of the great things that are happening in the area, especially the Sesquicentennial.
What do you think the long-term viability of sports tourism is as the primary focus of the Visitors Bureau?
I'm not sure that Carson City is big enough for a sports event tournament, or we don't have any close arenas except to Reno, and that's, you know, 30 minutes away. But it would certainly be an interesting thing to explore, to talk about viability of sporting events and things of that nature. Right now, I don't think we have the venue to accommodate them. I'm not sure, though.
Good afternoon. How does the CVB add to the community economic development?
Well, the information that it puts out and the efforts that it puts forth to get people here, anytime you get people here and staying in hotels, you're adding to the economic development of the community. Concurrently, if hotel owners can stop deferring maintenance and just put a little paint on their structures, it makes their buildings a little more appealing to people who come to visit here.
Diane, thanks. Just one clarification question. You said you were a marketing director for the law firm, or were you a marketing director for a property?
I was the marketing director for the law firm.
So they had their own independent public relations move?
Oh, they did, yes, indeed.
Okay, all right.
Very difficult marketing, a law firm, or an intangible item as opposed to a product.
Okay, thank you. And you're welcome to sit, because we're going to interview Jonathan Bullware next, but please know that on behalf of us, all of us in your community, thanks for your involvement in our community, you're wanting to get, move Carson City to a better place, and these are the hardest decisions we make. You hear us say that, they really are. You know, I say it all the time, and I think you hear other board members say it, it's the hardest, it's not to say that we're not going to have hard decisions coming up later this afternoon, too, but they are difficult decisions. So again, on behalf of all of us, thank you for applying, and you're welcome to sit and listen and see where we go, okay?
I understand, and if it turns out that I am not the one that is chosen, you haven't seen the last of me, I will find a volunteer opportunity in Carson City somewhere.
That's what we like to hear, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Diane, thank you, all right.
Hey Jonathan? Go right on up to the podium.
Good afternoon Jonathan.
Good afternoon.
How's Gold Dust doing this afternoon?
Gold Dust is doing okay.
Very good.
Good afternoon everyone, Jonathan Bullware, General Manager of the Gold Dust West.
Hi Jonathan, applied for reappointment. Tell us a little bit about, you know, what you think of what's been happening with the CCCVB, and, you know, what you see as the next step, and kind of why you want to stay involved.
Well, you know, actually, we kind of talked about this at our last board meeting. It's amazing the difference between when we started a little couple of years ago, from the time we went through the transition, because I think when we went through the transition, after Candy gave us great years of his leadership of the Visitors Bureau, you know, we were really trying to figure out, you know, who we are, what are the next steps, what direction we were going to go in, how are we going to sell Carson City, how are we going to really represent ourselves? And so in that transitional period, I think that was really the toughest time for us to find our footing, because we had new board members and everyone, you know, just trying to get the board in direction. So I think what the board did is a really good job in establishing a foundation, really establishing from that first meeting as a new board, when we did our strategic planning meeting, to really get on the same page, to really talk amongst each other of how we felt, how we should sell the city, what we felt about tourism, what was important, what are the things that we did well, and what are the things that we wanted to move away from. And I really think that set the foundation for us to be able to move forward, and it really set the foundation for when we set up our search committee for hiring an executive director, because that was my first process in doing something like that, and having us all in agreement of how important it was, or the same vision for Carson City, was really crucial in that process. And as all of you know, we selected Joel Dunn, and from there, he's just hitting the ground running. But what I think has really been special about us as a board is that we've been able to recognize the fact of, hey, where do we need to get better? What kind of tools does Joel need to be successful? And really helping him and guiding us on how we market Carson City. So in that interim period, or in the period that Joel has been there, we've been able to establish a new website. He's been great at doing a mobile app, rebranding, you know, changing our tagline to where your experience starts here, where we've been able to really diversify how we represent the city as far as how we market it, VNT, sports, hiking, lakes, our location, and really I think we have a really good handle on establishing a foundation for moving forward. The reason why I want to serve the next two years is because we're ready to soar. I mean, the hard work still to come, but the hard work, a lot of it's been done in the sense of, we know where we're going. We know where we're going, we know who we are, we know how we're going to market, we know some of the markets that we're going to target, and so now that we're all operating with the same vision, on the same page, then I just think it's really going to take off from here.
Hi Jonathan, my question is, how does the CVB add to the community economic development?
How do we add to economic development? Well, I guess the obvious answer would be through tourism. We talk a lot about economic development, and really our role is being able to bring in overnight stays. I mean, that's what we're focused on, being able to, I think it's two things, because overnight stays is the obvious answer. I think the bigger answer is to educate people about Carson City, who we are and what we're all about, because get the message out that we, where we are, our location, the fact that we're the capital, our history, and all the things that we have to sell. And being able to diversify our message, get out to different marketplaces that we haven't reached so far. So I think once we're able to communicate with folks of what a great city this is to have a group or an event, or whatever it may be, I think then that will pave the way for economic development. And we've seen some of that. We've seen some of, in our last board meeting, we talked about on our website hits now. It used to be that the number one hit was coming from Carson City. Well, now the number one hits are coming from California. And so as we start to broaden our reach, bring more people into the community, well, obviously more people in the community, new people into community will add to economic development. So I see us having a responsibility, a role, a big role, in ensuring that we market the city the way it should be marketed. We drive overnight stays, but we educate the world about our brand, and that's what we're focused on.
Thank you. How viable do you think sports tourism is as the long-term primary focus of the Visitors Bureau?
I think it's really important. This is what I'm thinking, because sports tourism is important, there's no doubt, we've established that. However, I hesitate to take a singular approach to the city, and what I mean by that is, in this economic environment, there is no one thing that's just going to get us over the top. Certainly, we've identified an area in which is an economic engine for us. I can speak as a person that runs a property. We benefit when the sports tourism comes into town, and so, and we found a niche. We have found people that have said, hey, we want to come to your city for sports, and we'll bring more sports here, just provide us the facilities and we'll do. So of course, we're going to continue with that effort. However, it's important that we diversify our efforts. It's important that we don't become dependent on just one particular industry. And so that's why we have, our tagline is "Your Experience Starts Here," because we want to talk about all the different things. I think the VNT plays an important role in that as well, because we have something that's very unique, and anytime you have something that's unique, that you can separate yourself from your competition, I think it's important to take advantage of that. But as far as sports, long-term viability, absolutely. I mean, I wouldn't deviate from that goal, or from that effort that we're putting into it, but I certainly wouldn't minimize the other industries that we can go after. That's just one target, and we really, I really want to emphasize to Joel and to the board that that's just one target. We need to really diversify efforts and look at other industries as well. Yep.
Jonathan, how would you use emerging technologies and social media to enhance and promote Carson City?
Well, we've actually really started that effort. Joel did a great job with the greatest example is the mobile app. I mean, because we didn't have a mobile app before, and in our studies, and him educating himself and educating us, is that more and more people are getting their information from their smartphones, and they're using their smartphones and their tablets. So there's two things that we did. Well, we said, okay, well, if that's how people are getting their information, well, we need to be the leader in establishing an application where people can access on their phone, and not just an application, but an application that tells us everything to do about Carson City. And if you go to that mobile app, it's almost information overload, you can go, you can get almost any bit of information about our city to market our city. So that was one thing about using technology. The other thing that's important about using technology is now that more people are using their smartphones, their tablets, and that type of thing, it's important to design a website so that when you access our website on a desktop, on a tablet, on a mobile phone, that's very user-friendly. And so, you know, and the team that Joel put together did just that. And so that's one example of how. And then as far as social media, our biggest efforts are Facebook, on Twitter. We recognized that it was so important that we created a position of a social media expert, I'm not sure of the exact title, but that person, sole responsibility, or I shouldn't say sole, but major responsibility, is to take advantage of technologies such as Facebook, Twitter, all the different ways of reaching our folks and getting our message out there. So we've dedicated a position to be able to take advantage of the social media network as far as getting information. And we've started to see, we got an update on our last meeting about how effective and how that's growing. So the more we're able to educate about Carson City through these means, we've set ourselves up to be able to take advantage of that, and we're just going to continue with that effort. Yep.
Hi Jonathan.
Hi Karen.
Well, leading in from Brad's question, you know that the CVB's prime focus is marketing. Now, from your perspective as involved with a hotel property, if chosen, what new insight do you want to bring to the CVB's marketing directive from the whole hotel vantage point?
From a hotel, well, from a, what I would bring, and I've been thinking a lot about this, is what, I think we need to become a little more educated about the potential markets that are out there that we have not touched, that were the markets that are perfect match for our city. We've certainly identified one of them, in sports tourism, but what else is out there that we can focus on, that we can go after, that are just a perfect match for our city, that we can establish visits, repeat visits? And so I think we really, because it's one thing to go out and blast, you know, as a hotel blasts a particular area, but it's another thing as far as an email blast or communication, and that's important, but be specific about knowing more about the people that you are communicating with. Who are they? Why are they making a trip here? Why are they choosing here? Is there a group of people specifically that would be a great fit for us at any time of year? We need to spend a little bit more time educating ourselves about, okay, we've got the tools in place, now how do we identify the folks that we're going to go after, and why would they be, why would they make a visit here? Why would someone in Sacramento say, you know what, Carson City is a great place to come, I'm going to stay at the Gold Dust West? What motivates that person to make a trip? A lot harder, but very important, especially when you have limited dollars, to choose those specific markets. So I think that is a focus, that is, I mean, that's what we do in our hotel, try to do. Like I said, you're relied upon information, but as you gather on social media, the way our website's designed, we start getting that information, we're in a better position to be able to answer those questions and have more effective direct marketing.
Thanks Jonathan, anything you want to add?
No, I just, actually, I shouldn't say no when I start talking, but yes.
You're like an attorney on the one hand, on the other.
No, I don't have anything to say.
They've got all kinds of hands, man.
You know, I just want to say, regardless of which direction you go, I have really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to serve the city. It has been a very rewarding experience. You know, it was a little challenging in the beginning, not really trying to educate myself on how public life works, and, you know, open meeting, and all those different things. So from a personal standpoint, I learned a lot about, I've got a little taste of what you do, just a little taste, but it's been rewarding. It's been rewarding to be in a position to be able to try to help the community, and I really, I really have enjoyed that. So however your decision is, I really appreciate the time that I've had, and I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you Jonathan, and on behalf of all of us in your community, thanks for dedicating the time to serving these boards, and your interest in making sure that our community moves forward. So as you know, you're welcome to sit, because we're going to vote on this one right now.
Okay.
And I know your family's big in public service, too, so you pass on our congratulations to your brother who was appointed and confirmed as the United States Federal Judge.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. These are tough, man. Somebody want to make a, want to put their foot in the water?
I'll go first.
All right, go.
And, you know, again, as the mayor said, these are the hardest decisions we make, but in this particular instance, I think that we have somebody who's taken a leadership role on the committee and has indicated that they would like to continue with that leadership role, and I'd like to give him that opportunity to do that, so my vote's going to go to Jonathan.
John and Jim.
Jonathan? You know, I just want to comment. I've been to the meetings held at the CVB. I see what the role that Jonathan plays here, and it's a vital, important role. I think he is the person at this time to fill the chair for another term, and my vote is for Jonathan.
Which means that the mayor, the mayor pro tem are irrelevant. Not a bad place to be in on these votes. All right, the chair will entertain a motion to appoint Jonathan Bullware for another two-year term on the CCCVB. Is there a motion in effect?
I will.
Yeah, make a motion so we've got it done.
I move to approve Jonathan Bullware as the representative on the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Hotel Motel Industry category.
Motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Post nay carried unanimously. Diane, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you often, come on back. Thank you for your interest, okay. All right, now we're going to take up the at-large position. We have General Jones here. Well, you are a general, come on, you outrank Morano and I. Morano and I, what are you doing, huh?
For the record, I'm Jim Jones.
Jim over here, right, to get us all, man, and John. You know...
I'm enlisted, I'm not an officer.
Stan, why don't you... Stan, why don't you, why don't you tell us a little bit about, and we're going to go, but tell us a little bit about, you know, your experience on the CCBB and where you see it's going, and any advice you want to give, or just your thoughts, and then we'll reappoint you.
Thank you. Well, I've been on the board for two years. I think we've made great progress in our two years. When you go back and look, we hired a new director. We separated the Visitors' Bureau from the VNT, which I think was long overdue, and it was a huge project. We redirected our advertising efforts locally, and the money is being spent locally instead of, all of it was out of town when we took over. And I believe we have transparency, which I'm not sure we had before. And I think that's very important.
Other questions, anybody?
Stan, I just want to thank you for agreeing to reapply.
Thank you.
Same thing Stan, since you're the only one for the category and we have to select somebody, it's going to be you. So, so, so thank you very much.
Is that it? All right, then supervisor, everybody, you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to appoint Stan Jones to the Citizen-at-Large position for the Visi, Carson City Visitors' Bureau for two-year, for a two-year term that expires on July 2016.
Motion by Karen, supervisor, about second by supervisor, on a motion discussion. Hearing none in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, thank you, thank you, General.
You bet, thank you.
It is for eight years, right?
Right. All right, Karen, you're going to leave, all right? All right, now we're going to take up the one for hotel. Let's see, this is, other commercial interest. Hi Rob, good to see you again.
Good morning, welcome.
How'd we make out this morning? Are you limping?
No, no.
Okay.
Just walking slow.
Swaggering, okay, so that's a good swagger, man. That's good, I like to hear that.
I offered ladies first, but Marina wanted me to come up first.
All right, but, you know, you're a good, you're a good person to doing that, that's great. You know, I think, you know, we have, we have the rule about, you know, not serving on dual commission, dual boards or commissions. And I noticed your application says, you know, because you're on the Charter Review Committee, which we had this morning, and that if you're appointed here, you will resign off the Charter Review Committee.
Yes, sir.
And I guess the question, Randy, is that sufficient to do, or what?
Well, yeah, if, if you want me to be lawyer, lawyer, lawyer-like, if you read your policy on dual appointments, it's, it's persons that you appoint. He's appointed by, I think Senator Kekeffer.
Right.
So if you did not appoint him, if he served on both of them, if he was reappointed, I don't think it would be in violation of your policy.
That's what I thought, okay, good call, and thanks for dotting the i's and crossing the t's on that one. So, Rob, why don't you tell us a little bit about, you know, you've served on the Charter Review Committee for a long time, why do you want to move from there over? And you wouldn't have to resign, by the way, is what we're just hearing here.
Oh, no.
What, what's your interest in the CC, the Visitors' Bureau? Tell us a little bit about where you think it's been and where you think it should be going, and what you'd like to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Rob Joyner, resident of Carson City, native of Nevada, been in Carson City 30 years. My background, as many people know, is in local government for over 30 years, and eighteen of those in Carson City, planning, economic development, redevelopment. And during redevelopment and economic development, I was able to manage some of the programs that now this Carson City Convention and Visitors' Bureau still maintain. And you say where it's been, where it's going. You know, if you look at the statutes of the Fair and Recreation Board, State of Nevada, which the CVB comes under, it's really an extension of that. The purpose is to take the funds generated from the transient occupancy tax and put those into projects and programs that regenerate back into the community to bring people into, again, fill those beds and fill our activities, bring in new activities, so that we can grow our economy. And that's what I think all of us want to see. So in my present duties of doing real estate, still like to recruit business to Nevada, that's what I did for many years for two different local governments in Nevada. It's still something very passionate with me. I see this as another vehicle to serve my community while I'm in private business and help that. I think the new direction under the new director is very positive. I know when Mr. Dunn was with the Parks Recreation, he was very strong in bringing in tournament play. And I firmly believe that is a great, a boost for our economy. The activities, the programs that we do, you know, in the historic district downtown and the parks, those are all very positive. Heritage tourism is very positive. Those things, I think, should be and are being supported and improved, and I'd like to be part of that.
Hey, Rob.
Hi, Brett.
How would you use emerging, emerging technology and social media to enhance and promote Carson City?
How would I, as a member of the, of the board of the Convention and Visitors' Board and under the directorship of Mr. Dunn, I think that's being done now. I've been over there several times and, and taken the apps and downloaded. I think that's number one. I mean, that's just today, that's just where we are, that's reality. You have to use social media to advance yourself and promote. And I think it's working very well. If you see the hits to our website, to the, to the apps, it's a great way to market outside the region and within the region. You know, our events, the, the VNT Railroad, you know, when Sacramento fills up their Polar Express, they're bouncing over here, they, they co-market. That's an excellent thing. There's just unlimited opportunities for that in the region to, to market. So my background is, you know, I've grown up with technology, and it's, it's a reality. We all have it, we have it in our pockets. And it's a great way to promote what we're doing.
How viable do you think sports tourism is as the viable, as the long-term primary focus of the Visitors' Bureau?
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. I think it's one of the key. I wouldn't say it's the end-all be-all, but again, as I said in my opening remarks, it's one of the key things we can do. Look at the, the fields we have and the opportunities we have to reinvent ourselves with different venues. You know, there's golf courses in play, and maybe they're going to be reinvented and repurposed for something else. You know, in historic preservation, we talk a lot about adaptive reuse. I think there's a lot of opportunity for that. As I said, tourism for sports, local, regional, nationally, is huge. We have a beautiful climate here, a beautiful setting for these. And I think we, the Mac Center, if we can get more indoor venues for all season, it's just a no-brainer. It's just happening. You know, we compete with the, the all-terf center up in Sparks, it's huge, but we compete with that very well. And again, we can play off of that. So there are people, we're on the map in, in our region for activities, and we can only benefit from that.
Afternoon, Rob. How does the CVB add to the community, community economic development?
Again, Mr. Schirck, it's, it's integral. You know, if you look at the state economic development and how they've now regionalized that under the governor's office, and reaching down to the different promotions they do for territories, and, you know, in Nevada, it's happening here, and all the different buzzwords you use for the activities we have outdoor, it's an integral part. You know, when you bring people into the community to fill your restaurants and your beds, Mr. Morano, when he was interviewed, talked about being here and living and seeing that, you know, firsthand, what we have, you know, eclectic things and things that are unique to us. Our history, people come here, when we did the study back in the 90s of why people came here, they said they came here for our history. We said, what were you most disappointed by here? Your lack of direction to your history. And so we did the walking tours and the trails in the historic district, and we started celebrating our history, and it works. You know, we have the trail systems now, we're expanding, people come to, to use those things. So it builds the economy. The, the study we did on the VNT Railroad in the 90s, Vicki Flommer and her group, we commissioned that. There are people who travel not just the country, but the world to ride short-line railroads. Now, I know it's been controversial here, but that, the money shot is that runs through Canyon. You bring that back down the canyon, you put that in Carson City so it's seen more of a Carson City venue, not just Virginia City. I can't imagine how big that is. Some have argued, well, that generation has passed that rode those railroads. I think we can create a whole new generation of lovers of railroads. Who doesn't love a railroad? There are friends I had in town last week from Iowa, adult families, they rode the railroad a week ago tomorrow, and they got one of the last tickets. And the ticket master said, it's a good thing you came today because tomorrow's sold out. And that's very positive, that's extremely positive. And I talked to someone about, and I guess they're doing it, we do the Polar Express, it sells out, it's a wonderful venue, but we need to do some, more activities in the summer, themed activities to generate tropical, you know, express, or whatever you want to call it, a summer express. People loved to ride that railroad. And I know it's controversial, how you fund it is, is, is the question, and I talked to the mayor recently about some of the things in play on that. It's all very positive. When that happens, and it's not if, it's when, that's going to be a boon to our economy. We had the Asian community look at northern Nevada, including Carson City, many years ago, when Han, the architect, was, that's what he goes by, Han, he worked for Art Hannafin. And he brought an Asian cultural center to look at Carson City, tied to the railroad heritage that they have. And if we can get things like that back to marry with our railroad, it brings a whole new tourism opportunity for our city and our region.
Thank you.
So the economy is, is number one.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to conclude, Rod? Rob?
I'm Rob Joyner, I'm here to serve. No, I, it's, thank you for the opportunity.
You're all right, man.
I truly appreciate it. If I can offer something to you, you think I, I'm the best candidate, I appreciate your support. I have the time to commit to this. I respect all the members of the committee that are on there now on the board, starting with Mr. Bullware, who I've known since he came to town. And I, I'm very respectful of Mr. Dunn and what he's doing. I think it's a great new direction we're taking, and just like to offer my help.
Well, Rob, I think on behalf of all of us, again, thank you for your service on the, on the Charter Review Committee, and you don't have to leave, but thank you for, on the, thank you for, you know, heading that up. I think, you know, you've been on it for a while, and you chaired it this last year. And regardless of how this vote comes out, I know that you're committed to helping to your community no matter, in whatever capacity you can. And I think that's wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank all of you.
You bet. Hello, Renee.
Hello.
How you doing this afternoon?
Fantastic, how are you?
Very good.
For the record, Renee Plain.
Hi. You know, have you ever been through these before, these interviews?
No, sir.
No? Well, here's what happens, and, because we've got it blanked off out there, right?
Yes.
Hopefully we do.
Yeah.
All right, just got to confirm that. You know, we kind of ask the same questions of, of all the applicants, so nobody gets an unfair question or fair question or whatever. So, one, we want to start by saying thank you for applying to serve your community.
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, I, I'd usually like to ask a question just to get a feel, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, you know, we see your app, your resume, tell us a little bit about yourself, what you think of, of the activities that the CCBB's done to date, and what you think you'd like to contribute, and where you think it could go.
Sure. So my background, I graduated from UC Davis in 2004 with a bachelor's degree in English, minor in communications. And then my husband and I moved here four days after I graduated to be closer to family. After doing some soul-searching for about a year and a half, I happened to land in advertising, working for a national trade publication that featured motorcycle aftermarket products. And I, I worked there for a while, working on a national level. I didn't get to see my clients except for once a year at trade shows. Only communicated through telephone and email and just decided that was not, I loved what I did, I didn't like not being able to see and be a part of my clients' lives every day. So I ended up working for the Reno Gazette Journal in advertising, joined the Downtown Business Association within my first month of being there, to get involved and see how I could help the businesses and help them grow their events, like the Wine Walk and the Beer Crawl. Joined the Chamber right away, started, I went to my first Chamber event that first week of being part of the RGJ. After they closed the Carson Bureau, I started working for the Nevada Appeal and worked there for over two and a half years in advertising sales. Continued my work with the Chamber, became an ambassador, got on the leadership team for the Young Business Professionals, and just continued working downtown, started doing marketing presentations, and really strengthened my connections within the community by attending different events, be, being a part of and an asset to the different organizations throughout town, the Boys and Girls Club, the school district, and just continued building those relationships until I was able to go out on my own in 2012 and take that relationship that I had in the community as a trusted consultant and advisor, and start working in a broader level. Instead of just selling products, I was able to start working on real solutions. So what I love about what the Visitors' Bureau is doing right now is they are marketing Carson City as a great, active, wonderful place, focusing on all of the great things that we have here, not just one or two things, but everything that we have. I had the pleasure of being in the, in their board meeting on Monday and was able to see the marketing presentation and... It's everything that I have a passion for. It's print, it's online, it's social media, it's email, it's, they're doing so many great things. And I did take notes at the meeting, I've already got in touch with Kyle Horvath and made some suggestions on how they could strengthen some of the things they're doing, some tools that I use as a business. So I feel like I would be a really good asset for them because they're moving in such a strong marketing direction, it makes sense to have a marketing expert on the board to just lend that extra guidance and give them that advice that they might need every now and then, just to make sure they're on the right track.
This isn't my question, this is a different, this is a procedural thing. You're in the advertising business, will you have a conflict of interest with any of your clients, or will this prevent you from working if you get on this committee?
I don't think so. I have a wide variety of clients that...
That's enough, I just, I have to ask the question.
Oh, okay.
It's one of those things. How viable do you think sports tourism, tourism is as a, as the long-term primary focus of the Visitors' Bureau?
Well, I think that sports tourism has definitely brought in a great amount of money and has put Carson and its facilities on the map. And I think that we should absolutely continue focusing in that direction. Do I think it's the only focus? No, we are so close to lots of great, different places, and as we continue to build and create this wonderful culture for Carson City, it's just going to add to people coming back. So they might come here first for the sports tourism, but they're going to come back for everything else that we have to offer. So should we continue? Yes. Is it the only focus? I don't think so. I think it's one of the many assets and, and great things that we have to offer. You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Jim.
How does the CVB add to the community economic development?
Well, as people come in, of course, they're going to spend money, their tax dollars are going to help us be able to continue to market this great place. It brings business to all of the local businesses, the restaurants, they might need to stop in, you know. My dad has a propensity for always forgetting my mom's bag when they go on a trip, and I'm sure there's other situations where that might happen, so maybe they might need to stop into one of our shopping areas and purchase a new wardrobe. There's lots of different ways that people visiting our area can spend money and provide for our economic development. You're welcome.
Hi, Renee.
Hi, Brad.
How would you use emerging technology and social media to enhance and promote Carson City?
Excellent question. Social media is one of my passions. When I was at the meeting on Monday, they actually talked about what they're currently doing. They are doing Facebook, which is primary, Twitter, which is another primary, they are working on Instagram, Vine, Pinterest, YouTube. So what I would love to see them do is focus more on video, which is something that they had mentioned they were going to do. had mentioned they were going to do. Video is huge for this year, it's only going to get bigger. I don't know if you know, but YouTube is the second-largest search engine, and hundreds of hours are uploaded every second. So, video is huge. I would love to see them do more video, that can be shared through all of their channels, be embedded in a code into a newsletter, and focus that way. They can use Pinterest, which is a little bit more, which is used by primarily women. And as they're planning those vacations, they can see all of the great images that Kat Allison has taken of Carson City, and link it right back to their website, and get people to come in and buy tickets to those events, or just see more of what we have to do. There's lots of really great things. I could go on and on. How much time do I have? You know, there's lots of great apps that they can build out on their Facebook page that can also be included in their website, to link traffic from their social media back to the website, and then get them interested in what we have to do. They've got great photo contests going on right now, the Beat the Heat one is awesome, which I wish I had a way to beat the heat right now, because I'm feeling a little bit warm up here. So, I think they're doing a great job. There's always new industry techniques that are coming out, and that's one of the ways I can absolutely assist. I pay attention to all of the major blogs, all of the major websites, I invest in my own industry education. I belong to the Carson Area Marketing and PR Network, so I make sure that I stay up to date on all of that, and can help them stay up to date on social, definitely. It's not going away, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Anything you want to add? I know it's maybe feeling hot up there, but anything you want to add?
Just a little warm, yeah. I do want to say that I truly enjoy sharing my marketing knowledge. I have, since I've gone out on my own, I have been a teacher for social media and marketing classes at The Brick. I've been a guest lecturer at the Business 101 classes at WNC. I have presented at the Visitors Bureau's Social Media Symposium for the rural areas, and have been asked to come back again this year. I speak at several different private groups, I've given presentations to the Chamber's YBP group, and other groups. So, I love sharing the knowledge and my expertise. I don't feel like I should keep it to myself. I would love to share it, and make sure that we're moving in the right direction.
Well said.
Thank you.
And again, on behalf of all of us, thanks for applying to make your community a better community. And I know, regardless of how this comes out today, that you're involved, so, and so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. You're welcome to sit around, listen, we're going to take up the hard, these are hard for us.
The hard part, right?
The hard part, this is really hard, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, board, you want to stick your, put your toe in the water again? Okay, go.
Yeah, I'm going to. This one's, this one's tough. Not only are both of the applicants friends of mine's, but I score the applicants based on their answers, and this is the first time that I've had two applicants that ended up tied. So, I have a no-win situation here. So, at the end of the day, Rob, you're already on a committee, and Renee, you're not, so I'm going to give my vote to Renee, just so that we get as many qualified people on committees as we possibly can.
I tend to go that way, too, but go ahead, Jim, you're next.
I think both applicants are very qualified, reading everything, and their presentation here today, they both meet the criteria. Although, I, I believe Rob Joyner is the right selection, even if he is on a board now, which he's offered to resign from, if he needed to, I think he's the better selection. I think they're both qualified, though.
I will go with Renee, because of her knowledge of electronics and her youth.
Move it, move it right along, we'll take a motion by Monkowski to appoint Renee.
Quickly, I move to appoint Renee Plain to the other commercial interest position on the Carson City Visitors Bureau, for a two-year term that expires July 2016.
The old guy want to second that?
I'll second it, I'll second it, but I also want to just say that Rob knows everything already, and Renee has a lot to find out.
All right. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos, nay, carried. Okay, thank you. And thanks, Rob, and thanks, Renee. Thanks for everything, you guys, these are tough, man, because they're all our friends. All right. All right, board, are we ready to continue? Pick up on item number 25. Do we need, do we need a break to get set up the table, or are you ready to go?
We need to get your board member.
Oh, no, you can leave, Rob.
We have a presentation.
I do, yeah. I'm set up, but I do have some late information, if you want to take a couple minutes.
All right, we'll be in recess until 2:30. We're going to call a meeting, the Board of Suitor's back to order. When you get a chance, we'll kind of get ready to go here. All right, we're going to take up item number 25A, this is the Schultz Investments LLC tentative subdivision map. Who's going to take us through that? Miss Pansky, you going to do that? Susan Dorr Pansky?
I'm going to do that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Susan Dorr Pansky.
All right. You know, it's kind of nice to have a tentative subdivision map to look at.
Yeah.
I mean, we haven't had one in
Seven years.
Several years.
It's been probably seven years.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right. Well, tell us what's going on, and see what we've got to do.
All right.
Or not do.
So, this is a request for a tentative map on Clear Creek Road, for six residential units, all a minimum size of five acres. And that is consistent with the underlying zoning district of single-family, five-acre. Just going to go through a couple of slides, and then I'll get into the report itself. This is an aerial of the property. It's south of US Highway 50, and north of Clear Creek Road. It's kind of hard to show, see Clear Creek Road on this aerial, but I'm going to show you a different one that you can see a little bit better. This is from our new pictometry software that we're loving. You can kind of see, actually, a little bit of the topography of the site, and you can also see the roads and the existing residents a little bit better on this slide. So, Clear Creek Road is right here. The subject parcel is outlined in yellow, and then the access to the subject parcel is here, and then over this way, and then over this way. That's their primary access. And they do have a secondary access proposed off of Highway 50.
Susan, just curiosity, is this where the fire is?
Yes, I believe it is, actually. I wasn't aware of that, but I just talked to one of the property owners before the meeting started, and they have, from what I understand, been evacuated from this area. So, yes, it is. And it's a good thing that we've proposed wildland urban interface conditions as a part of this approval. Okay. So, as I mentioned, six lots are proposed as a part of this development. All six lots are a minimum of five acres, and actually, they are, they are actually a little bit larger than five acres, but a minimum of five acres excluding the roadway, because this is a development that's proposed to have a private roadway, and so therefore that means that an easement would exist for the roadway. And so, the individual property owners adjacent to that road would actually own the road. But the five-acre minimum is required outside of the roadway, and the applicant has met that condition. As a part of the original conceptual map approval that we had to go through with this project in 2010, applicant was asked to show on the future tentative map, not only the setback areas, which you can see in the heavy dashed line on the exterior of the parcels, but also buildable areas. And those are a little bit harder to see on the screen, unfortunately, but they're small dashed lines that indicate areas that the slope is low enough where you can develop, as opposed to the steeper slopes where development's not possible. And that was meant to demonstrate that the lots that are being created would have usable, developable pads on them. And so, to follow up on that, this is a slope map that was provided by the applicant's engineer, showing the various slopes on the site, and everywhere that has the yellow and green are essentially buildable. The areas that you see in the red are not buildable, that's significant slope areas, and you can see on this one a little bit better, the hatched areas are the buildable So, I'm going to end on this picture, and talk a little bit about our recommendation. We are recommending approval of this tentative map. It meets the criteria of the underlying zoning district, and we have recommended 53 conditions of approval. All of those conditions have been reviewed by the applicant, and they are in agreement with them. Just a couple of things that I want to address related to, the first thing is related to access on Clear Creek Road. In reviewing this project, the Transportation Division wanted to make it really clear that Old Clear Creek Road is not a public road. It is a private road with easements across it, and in some cases, possibly no easements, all the way up. Carson City has no way to maintain this road. And this is something that we are aware of, and up until this point, and moving forward, we anticipate that this is not going to be a problem, because the property owners have generally allowed access to occur, and we anticipate that that will continue. But we wanted to make it very clear that we have, we do not have the ability to maintain Clear Creek Road, because we don't own it. So, we had asked, as a condition of approval, the final map has a note on it that states that fact, so that, moving forward, any people that buy lots in this area would be well aware of that situation. And just to back up quickly, since the lots are significantly large, what the applicant is proposing to do is to final map them, develop the road, and then sell the individual lots for custom homes, essentially. So, they will not be participating in the actual building of the homes unless they are going to be building customs themselves, but that's not my understanding of what the applicant intends to do. It's my understanding that, at some point in the last decade, there was a move to do a special assessment district for Old Clear Creek Road, and it had been initiated by Larry and Andy, and discussed significantly with all of the property owners in the area, but was generally not supported. And so, the initiative died, and we're unfortunately left with the same situation that we had before, which is that the roadway is not ours to maintain, and we have no ability to do so.
So, one of the conditions of approval could be they take care of the road.
It could, I suppose.
I'm kidding you.
We're not going to recommend that.
I'm kidding you.
I see where you're going, though, Mr. Mayor.
I saw the Manhart folks just cringe, but you know, you got to have a little bit, a little bit of humor in the afternoon here, that's all right, come on.
Right. A couple of things to note on the water and sewer. This tentative maps need to be reviewed by both NDP and the Division of Water Resources. They have been reviewed. Both of the organizations recommended denial for different reasons. However, the reasons that they had recommended staff doesn't feel, can't be overcome during the improvement process, and so, we are not recommending denial. However, we are acknowledging the fact that both of these parties have to sign the final map, and the issues that Water Resources and NDP bring up need to be addressed by the applicant, before the map will be signed and recorded. On the NDP side, it's related specifically to water quality, and on Water Resources' side, this is relatively standard. Until it's proven to them that water rights exist to adequately serve the property, then they would always recommend denial. So, through the process of development and mapping of this, these six lots, that would be addressed, and we would anticipate be addressed, and we would anticipate that the map would be signed by both of the organizations. But if it isn't, then we are not able, as the city, to move forward with recordation. On access from Old Clear Creek Road onto the property, like I had mentioned before, the primary access is off of Old Clear Creek Road, and it goes up through on an existing driveway, and this is a private driveway that serves several houses in the area. It's our understanding from the residents and from the applicant that this driveway is roughly about 11 or 12 feet wide. When we evaluated that, we determined that adding an additional six lots would make it a little bit more difficult for residents in the area to potentially pass each other on the roadway and stay on the pavement, because there will be more residents, so it's more likely that this will happen a little bit more often. And also for fire truck access, which is proving to be, be an issue right at this moment. Not the access, but generally just needing, them needing to be up there. So we recommended a condition of approval that the roadway be widened to 20 feet out to Clear Creek Road, and the applicant agrees with this condition. There is a property owner, however, in the area that does not agree with this condition, and cites the fact that the additional pavement width would require additional maintenance, and therefore additional money out of all of the residents' pockets, and doesn't feel that it's an appropriate condition. I'm just going to quickly address a question that Supervisor Bonkowski had in relation to a letter that was submitted by one of the property owners, and that is regarding the repair of existing driveways if they happen to be damaged during construction. This is not a condition that we had specifically addressed in our staff report. However, we have mentioned it to the applicant and believe that they would be willing to put something in place to make sure that if the driveways are damaged, then they would, then they would repair them. I'd also like to note that it's our understanding from the applicant that the construction traffic for the construction of the roadway is proposed to come from Highway 50 to mitigate and minimize the construction traffic that would go through the residential neighborhood. The applicant's representatives are in the audience, as are a couple of the property owners that I think would like to speak. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I will turn it over to them.
This is more of a policy discussion that we probably need to have, not with this applicant, but with just Carson City in general. We ran into the problem with, at the RTC, Regional Transportation Commission, with Sierra Vista Lane, and maintaining minimal access to their property. Sierra Vista Lane out on the east side, the other side of the river, hard to get to. BLM road not being maintained by BLM. The residents come to Carson City for, Carson City to maintain the road, so that it can be fire and police access into the area. Clear Creek, same type of thing. Property approved for houses, but no money for roads, no new roads. But 10 years from now, people demand, need, want police, fire, city services of some type, and they come to the future board, and adamant about it, and quite demanding. And we run into the situation where, okay, we'll give you these things, but we have to put in some type of a special improvement district. And then their, their answer is, well, I bought my house from somebody, or I'm the third owner of this house, and there are no city services there. And when the city goes to, well, look at your deed, it's got this restriction on it, that restriction on it, just like we're going to do with these people, and they're going, but that's not fair. So, I don't know. We tried to address it when we were doing Sierra Vista Lane, but it did not get addressed, because everybody just capitulated on it. I think we ought to reconsider either approving any type of zoning on properties like this, and just tell them, no, not unless you put a road in, and maintain it, and pay the cost to maintain it. Or, I don't know how to disclose it. It's an issue for zoning to, it's a continuing issue, and I thought maybe it wasn't going to exist anymore, but obviously it is. Go ahead, Lee, you're looking at me.
For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. I was wondering if you wanted a response. I mean, I do, you're right, it's in zoning, and where this needs to be addressed, and it's about zoning areas where you don't want to have to improve new roads and maintain new roads. Now, I think as, as our engineering manager will tell you, and I don't know that we're going to solve Clear Creek Road with this issue, but I wanted to point out that you brought up a good point in zoning, and that's where it needs to be addressed upfront, that this property now does have the five-acre zoning, so they have a property right and entitlement to certain developments, as long as they meet city standards, and that's, so that's where we are with this application. And that's, as opposed to maybe something that's more discretionary, rezoning it, higher density, more cars. Right or wrong, decades ago, Carson City has decided to zone this area for five-acre lots, and that's what the property owner's requesting at this time.
And I guess, just to bring this to a close, I would like the city manager to discuss with the board whether or not this board wants to face this issue once and for all for the rest of Carson City, or do we just sweep it under the carpet and let the board 10 years from now have this discussion?
And was, just for clarification, was I on track there? You mean, you mean the issue being looking at where are those areas where we have potential subdivisions in the future?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with what John's saying here. My concern is, we're granting the permission to build here, which I understand that, but there is no condition where the city must go up there and provide service to any homeowners, such as, is there a fire hydrant up there? Is there any other services within the city that will be provided to the homeowners, and we don't have adequate roadways to these city services? That's my question.
Well, I think that to say we don't currently have adequate roadways to these locations is not entirely accurate, because Clear Creek Road, while it continues to deteriorate, is still accessible by public services. And to answer your question about the fire hydrant situation, no, fire hydrants do not exist up there. However, there is a condition of approval, and this exists with most property in the wildland urban interface, that individual property owners must provide a large quantity of water that can be accessible by the fire department to use in the event of fire suppression. And in a lot of cases in this area, that comes in the form of a swimming pool that can be accessed through a hydrant situation that is specifically connected to that, but it's not public. So every house that's developed in a custom manner up there is required to provide that. And I can look through and find you the exact amount. I think it's 10,000 gallons a minute or some, I don't remember, so.
You know, to, to, I travel that road. We have friends up there. We go up there often. I think that road is terrible. I don't think it's well-maintained. I think if, I understand the predicament we're in, but I think it's going to be something what John alluded to, is that this is going to keep coming back to us over and over, not only for this particular area, but for others in the, in the future. I think maybe that's something that this board should look at, is how do we allow development to go where we're overseeing, and we're collecting taxes, and we're not providing the same service for those property owners that we are for other property owners within the community? Something to look at and further, and further discussion. That's what I was leading to, and I didn't mean to question you in the fashion I did.
Hi, Susan. I would agree with John and Jim on that issue, and I was talking to one of the residents earlier, and, you know, we live in areas where the roads are paved to our houses, and we've come to expect that, but they seem to be the exception of the rule, and yet pay property taxes. But with that being said, Danny, I know you have some information and background on what the cost of maintaining that road amounts to. Can you, so we could just have all the information on the table, could you let us know what that is?
Well, I don't have the, the cost to put it into our maintenance on a, on a five-year basis, on a slurry seal, that type of thing. But I do have some information on the special assessment district in order to reconstruct the road, in order for the city to start taking it over and have something to maintain.
That's the information I'd like to hear.
This comes out of a letter to the RTC from Larry Warner, previous city engineer, in September of 2006. There were basically three options proposed as to how this would be allocated throughout different entities. The total, just to bring it up to a pretty minimal standard without full reconstruction and full resolving all of the issues, just mainly the pavement, the total was about $2.7 million. At the time, the recommendation from the subsequent RTC meeting was option two, which was a cost per average daily trip of $14,688. The state of Nevada was $147,000. Clear Creek LLC was $559,000. The Carson City parcels were 1.16 million. The Douglas County parcels were around $810,000 of that $2.7 million. Does that answer your question?
Did I hear part of that from the Native American tribes?
Option two was Washoe Tribe at zero. Option one and option three, or option one had included the Washoe Tribe in there at $380,000, but option two was assuming the tribe would not participate in that. And that was from the RTC meeting where the agenda, the item went forward, and the RTC recommended to take option two to the public workshop, which was completed in the spring of 2007, which there wasn't much wanting to do that, and that's where it died.
Susan, if I may, just, I just wanted to ask a follow-up with a letter from James Tarr, and item two, where he talked about the water. Has that been resolved, or is there, the response in his letter, I don't know if that's an adequate response?
So, one of the things is the item two, the consultant claimed that a hydrology report had been prepared. That is talking about the drainage up there, and not a hydrogeologic study of the aquifer where a domestic well would be drilled. And we do, we don't require that, and the state doesn't regulate domestic wells. So there would be, and a hydrogeologic study of that aquifer for six domestic wells would likely hinder the whole thing, and probably even if all of them got together to do it, would be too much for, for one, any group of this. Even just for the city to undertake that for our own wells is quite a bit, so.
Okay. Other board comments? Public?
Well, the first member of the public's coming up. I just wanted to, I had neglected to mention this. The Planning Commission recommended approval 7-0 at their June meeting, so just to add that to the record.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, Supervisors, Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. I think Susan did a great job doing an overview of the project and the specifics. I'm not going to kind of beat that. I'd like to thank her for that. Obviously, we do agree with staff's recommendation, the recommendation of the Planning Commission for approval. We're here to lend our support to any questions you may have. You know, I think we do have two different issues here. We've got access on Old Clear Creek Road, and then we have, which has been an existing problem for, for years, that it sounds like people have been trying to resolve. And I think just the, you know, the tentative map being proposed has obviously brought this to light. You know, it didn't, I don't think it's going to exacerbate the problem that's already there, but I think what it's doing is at least spurring some questions in people's minds to get this solved. Obviously, the applicant, as much as anybody else up there, you know, wants to get this problem solved also. You know, and it's making sure legal access through easements is in place, and then, you know, one way or the other, all the residents coming together to figure out the best way to maintain the road. So those are the, kind of the two issues that I see. And I do see them as separate issues, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Questions, Chris? Homeowners, anybody out there? That's up there? Come on up.
My name is Legally Margaret.
Pull it down a little bit, please. There you go. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm sorry. My name is Legally Margaret Karas. I answered a peg. And last night, we had a forced evacuation for a fire, and there was no problem in any of the trucks coming up. They were happy. I had three trucks in my drive. They did a marvelous job at dealing with that fire, which was pretty ferocious. And the, the road is not, what did you say, Susan, 11 feet wide, or?
11 to 12 is what we thought, yes.
Yeah. Well, it's a little bit wider than that. I think 14 is what we've been working with over the years. And we don't wish to see the road, or I don't wish to see the road widened to 20 feet. All the, the roads have been labeled private, and even Old Clear Creek Road itself has been labeled private. And one resident said, if they want to come in and widen the roads and fix it up and do all that, they can maintain it, meaning the city. And we've been living with that. I've been up there, what, 27 years? And the firemen had no problem being up there and doing their job, and they did a marvelous job and stayed there. There were three trucks in my drive alone, and that's 250 feet long. So we're not understanding a lot of what's happening. No, we don't really want to see houses up on the slope above us, but it's perfectly legally presented, and it was approved by the Planning Commission. So, but, but to burden those of us who have lived there that long, one of them being me, I don't have the means to do 14,000 anything, or some millions either. I, my money tree has dried up, so.
Peggy, are you talking about the 20 feet?
The 20 feet.
On the access road?
Well, the 20 feet, as I understand, it would, would include the roads up to our various homes.
It's just the road from Clear Creek to the property where the lots are going to be developed, but that does include the road in front of your house and the Tarr's house in addition to, to others.
Yes.
Yes.
And, no. I really don't wish to see that, nor can I afford it.
Afford it in a sense of maintenance or construction?
Both.
Both? Assuming that, that, I mean, if this goes through, that the developer here would have to bear the cost of expanding the cost of expanding the roads from whatever it is to 20 feet. So, I don't know that there's a cost, a construction cost to you, but I think, you know, down the road is pretty.
There'll be a maintenance cost.
Maintenance issue, or snow removal, or something like that, you know, so.
And then there's additional runoff, and that has to be provided for, and then the drainage ditches themselves would have to be moved. So, no.
All right, John.
Peggy, could I use you for a second to explain my earlier comments? I wasn't suggesting anything that I said about this particular project, but if we looked at Carson City as a whole, and places where it's zoned for five acres and there are minimal improvements, we change that zoning so that those properties no longer are available for development. I would like the board to consider that as a policy for the future. Those that have existing, well, you have existing rights, and those shouldn't be taken away from you. As far as the 20-foot road, we can discuss that, and I thank you for your comments. As far as the firefighters showing up at your house, I thank them, and I.
Yeah, they were wonderful.
Did you evacuate, or?
Yes, we did.
See you there, okay. Well, I'm glad you're safe.
I'm sleep deprived. But, there was one other thing I wanted to say, and then it's gone somewhere else, but...
Let me ask while you're there, Peggy. Susan, is it just the road widening, or is, as Peggy said, there's drainage issues by widening the road?
I believe that drainage ditches do exist on either side of the road, and if that's the case, then as the roadway is widened, then those drainage ditches would need to be moved. But I'll note that there is a 60-foot-wide public drainage and access easement across all of these properties, so they have adequate room to do it.
Unfortunately, yes.
So, then...
And I own, my property is the way people come off Old Clear Creek Road to get into our area. I own a little bit of land on either side of that entrance there, and then it'll be a little bit further, and then off to the Tar's, who will bear the brunt of all of this. You know, it'll be they who can offer, build the wider road, and I don't see it, I mean, these trucks were huge, and they managed without any problem.
Okay, all right, thank you, Peggy, very much, all right. Other, yes, ma'am, come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It doesn't feel like noon.
Doesn't, does it?
I spent the night on the cot in the gymnasium without much sleep, so, yeah, I hope you take that into consideration.
What's in consideration, don't worry, it's been, just relax.
My name is Sandra Tar. Did I say that once? Okay.
Relaxing.
See, I told you I'm tired. I actually just had a couple of questions. As Peggy mentioned, our property will bear the brunt of the changes in the neighborhood with the widening of the current shared driveway.
And that is why, I mean the...
Because I can't, yeah, you pointed out, yeah, right there, that's our house. Okay, then go straight down from there, that little, that dark, yes, right there, that, just over a little bit to the building itself. That is our second, it's an outbuilding, it's a second garage, it's 1,800 square feet. That road currently cuts right, cuts our property into, along with Clear Creek Road, because our property continues up the side of that mountain around in a J and connects to Al Kramer's property. So, our amount, our property there will be significantly impacted by a lot more traffic, and I don't mind, I don't mind the traffic, but the wider the road, faster people seem to go. And also, in talking to the engineer from Manhard Construction, or consultants, last time with the Planning Commission, we talked about that curve, just above our other garage, there's a tree, right there. Okay, on the opposite side of that road, there is a very steep grade going down from the road to that other garage. People have gone off the road that have not driven judiciously during the winter and come very close to crashing into the side of that garage. When I mentioned that to him, he said, well, in widening the road, they would take that into consideration and put a barrier there. So, had I ever seen one of the concrete barriers alongside the freeway, okay, I said, is that something I'm going to have to look at every day? If you look at the property, the nature of the property does not include that kind of construction, it would really devalue our property, which we might want to sell one day, and who will want to have a property, a rural property, in a picturesque area that has a concrete barrier to prevent people from going over the road? It doesn't seem reasonable to me. I also want to know, who is the person that is going to maintain the width of the road? In the previous Planning Commission and in the conditions of the city's approval, I noticed that there's a road maintenance agreement for that subdivision, but it does not connect in any way that I could see to our road maintenance agreement that was originated in 1988, when the Ysbes were the only, only building up there, the only house up there. And it talks about Parcel D, which our, our house is, the Parcel D was actually divided into four sections, and ours is Section D1, Peggy's is D2, Ysbes is D3, and Al Kramer's is D4. It talks about an ease, the access between D to C, and then C to B, I mean, C to A, and then A is, B is farther on down the main road. So, it talks about those, and it referenced a plat map that I went to the county recorder's office and got, that was legible, because I was unable to see the small figures. And it doesn't say anything about public access, it says private access and drainage easement is 60 feet wide, and it has a very clear drawing showing that easement going across our property. I didn't see any, I couldn't find anywhere that it specified the width of the road. I found a meets and bounds description, but it doesn't have to do with our property. If you see further down Clear Creek, there's like a dirt road going up right on the left edge of that, that meets and bounds description describes that road. See that? Right on the left edge of your photo, way over to the left, yeah, right there, that dirt road. So, there's a meets and bounds, it's showing on our title report, and that was because when Clear Creek Partnership originally acquired these four parcels that they did CCNRs for, that they did the road maintenance agreement for, they, in their grant and sale deed, they had meets and bounds description of ingress and egress, and if you follow, if you have any, if you have any understanding of meets and bounds description, you'll see that describes that dirt road over there, and it does not describe our driveway, which was created some time later. The thing that concerns me the most about this is that the condition of the, of the maintenance agreement for the subdivision doesn't connect to the maintenance agreement for ours, so these, this more traffic, it's no removal for that subdivision, but yet we're all contributing to snow removal in our area, we're contributing to the resurfacing of the driveway at this time. We're, I'll tell you, there's a lot of old men that live up there in that canyon, and to see them out there in the hot summer sun doing cold patch on that, on that old Clear Creek Road is frightening, actually. So, 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 who, you know, it's like those, they're all volunteers, and they see the need to address something, and they go and do it. So, so that we're providing this service for the future owners of the property in this subdivision seems, seems that there should be something written into your condition that specifies that they share on the maintenance and of the road that they're going to use, of the shared driveway that they want, they want to have connect to their subdivision, and also, the drainages that's there, I couldn't figure out, who is going to create the new drainage, because if they widen that driveway, they're going to take out trees, and they're going to erase the drainage that's there. There's a curb at the west side of our property that prevents water from running down, because it's a hilly area, as you might guess, and our, our house sits down below the surface of that road, maybe 10 or 20 feet. So, there's a curb that runs along that edge of the driveway that prevents water from running down and eroding our property, and then in front of our property, there's a ditch. So, if they widen the driveway 20 feet in front of our house, they're going to take out the ditch, and they're probably going to take out that tree on the corner there, because there's not 20 feet to be able to do it. There's that, that steep grade on the, on the south side of the driveway where our other garage is, and I just have those questions that seem unanswered to me, like, what financial responsibility is going to transfer over to the people that are going to have these homes on these new lots? Seems a reasonable thing.
Let me ask you, the 20-foot, the widening was put on as a condition. Suppose they didn't have that condition, does that alleviate any of your problems?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind that. I think that there ought to be like some kind of, people that go down there 10 miles an hour, the people that live up there 10, 15 miles an hour, they don't have a problem with the road.
Let me, I'm a little confused on where the, I'm having trouble following where the maintenance agreements start and stop, and how many there are, so.
The maintenance agreement is...
Susan, help me see it, her comments on the map here, please.
So, I just have a quick question for you, Mrs. Tar. Is the maintenance agreement that you're talking about, does it include the current property owner, Bill Schultz, for the property above you?
No.
So, it, does it only include the four properties that, okay, and so...
It's four parcels, and the parcels are divided into, into four pieces. So, Parcel D has four, is divided into four sections. Parcel C is divided into four sections, or five possibly, I'm not, I'm not really clear about that.
So, the four original large parcels that are now small, five-acre parcels?
Well, 10-acre parcels.
Or 10-acre parcels are all a party to this agreement?
Right.
But the Schultz's are not a party to this agreement?
Not a party to it. It's not included, they were not part of the original four parcels that was bought by the Clear Creek Partnership back in 1983, and all of the CCNRs, the road maintenance agreement, all of that is specifically for those four parcels. The D parcel was the only one developed at the time the road maintenance agreement came, came into being, and it referred to future, future owners of properties in Parcel C and in Parcel A. So, so there wasn't anybody there then, but, and that it would, it would transfer and continue on as those properties were sold and developed.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, based on what she's saying, I, my understanding then is that all of these parcels from here over to here?
No, not that far. Just to, just to right, right there, yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay, so all of these, from here over to the west?
Right.
All of those are included, but this parcel is...
On the left, yes.
And this is included, but this parcel is not included in that agreement?
Right.
And that was not something that staff was aware of?
I'm sorry I'm rambling so much, I'm just, I'm just so, I am just, I'm too old to go without sleep, I can't tell you.
Don't give it a second thought, you're doing fine, you're doing fine. Why don't you sit down, sit down and relax for just a minute, let's get Chris back up here, and we'll talk a little bit about it. Talk about the road width and the maintenance agreement.
Yeah, the road width itself, you know, we were okay with the condition, you know, one way or the other, we're fine. I think the bigger issue might be the maintenance and the long-term costs of the, of the road, if it is widened. The way I had it explained to me was, Schultz Investments currently is not part of the maintenance agreement. What was done was, there was a contribution to the maintenance fund during the process of getting easements for access. Obviously, with this, there will be the addition of six lots, and I think it's fair for those six lots to contribute to the maintenance.
Is it, is it a permissible condition to say that you'll join a maintenance agreement? I don't know if you can do that legally.
Yeah, I would be concerned about that as well, and maybe Randy can chime in on that.
Well, I mean, obviously, those two parties would have to agree whether they could come to terms, you couldn't impose that upon the other party that's not an applicant.
Yeah, okay, well, I think that, probably solve the road widening, but I'm not sure we're going to solve a maintenance agreement here if you don't have one, so, I mean, okay, all right, thank you, Chris. All right, do you got questions?
I did have a question on that, Randy. If those are private drives and not public streets, then why can't we impose that condition as a condition of accessing private driveways?
Upon the applicant, as a condition, whether they can negotiate something and come back and prove that they have an agreement. Yes, you could do that.
I think that, well, anybody else want to speak, any other homeowners? Al, come on up.
Al Kramer, 4640 Oak Clear Creek Road, and most of what I want to talk about's already been covered, so I'll just touch very quickly on it. We really don't want to see that road expanded to 20 feet. It would cause problems with the grade that's there, and you'd have to chew into the mountain a lot, and then you've got drainage problems and fall-away problems of dirt and that sort of thing. It is closer to 14 feet for most of it now, going to 20 is a little excessive. There may be a couple of spots where it's needed, but I think going to 20 feet would encourage not only speeding, it'd screw up the drainage, and it'd make the snow removal more of a problem. Secondly, I would like to at least have the, have the applicant go on record as saying they would join our maintenance agreement at an equal basis, nothing onerous, no more than any of the rest of us, and we usually do it on percent of the roads used, and then whatever the cost is, we break it out on a parcel basis. There's 13 homeowners there now, I should say 12 homeowners and one vacant lot, and they share in that now, and we'd like to, six more, we'd just make the cost easier for the rest of us even, and they would take on for their road themselves. So, again, our driveways right now are private, not public, the really, in my understanding, because this property did not originate from the four parcels that were subdivided earlier, but has always been a separate 30-acre parcel with accessed Highway 50 in years past, there's no grandfathered in right for them to be able to use our parcel. no grandfathered in right for them to be able to use our, our parcels as access to theirs. And so, I agree that if the people who have, who have that driveway going up through there allow them to, that's one thing, but I don't think there's an inherent right for them to be able to do that. But if it's going to go forward and there's no complaint on that, I guess I don't have a problem. The final thing I wanted to mention was is, there was a time when they talked about a, a special assessment district for improving the road on Old Clear Creek Road, and the cost per family was just incredible. And I came back with and suggested that there be a by-county tax increment district, and as that development up by the golf courses is improved and they're sold off as lots, it raises the base for the whole area, and that increment could pave that, that road and bring it up in probably less than two years' worth of taxes. And, and this was something we brought to the legislature last time to allow a by-county tax increment district, and the legislature chose not to opine on it because we already have the right for both counties to do a tax increment and have the committee chairs work together and work on the same dollars and that. So I'd again encourage our board to address a, a tax increment district for Old Clear Creek Road and invite Douglas County to join in. And other than that, for questions, but whatever.
John's got a question.
Al, what's the access to this property off the freeway?
There is an emergency access egress. Can, can you point to, you had it on the other map real easy, where the, goes through, yeah, right there, thank you. You can see where, where the road goes out right there, however, you can see that's on a curve. It's a curved area and someone coming out, you can see some access, but if you look to the left a little bit on that, the dotted road that comes out, can you, can you point to that? Okay, that's an access that exists now, and as I understand, years ago, the, the highway department, because, in fact, the Schultz family had access across there when this was sold years and years ago, and they were given the ability to move cattle across the road, and there was one, not two, but one at the time, and that one is where the paved area goes out, which is kind of an emergency access for people who live in this area. Well, okay, we've, we've got the, the freeway interchange up farther west, and now this is in there, and, and I, I guess if, if they've gotten okay from the highway department to put another access on there, I'm sure it's emergency only, I have a real tough time seeing the highway department allowing trucks coming in there for building houses, and I think they're going to come up Old Clear Creek Road and tear it up more, and then our driveways and tear them up more. So we've got six, all the trucks for building six houses, it's going to be chewing up our shoulders and things like that, so, but, but I can't answer your question, John.
So, so this is a mile from the interchange, or is this...
It's probably closer to two miles.
Two miles, okay, so there's no access there, and so it would just be a, like you say, a gated road or something for fire access or something?
Yes.
So there's no solution to the Clear Creek traffic problem?
Correct.
There, without putting in a $4 million interchange if you could get it approved?
Right.
Okay.
So suppose, and just suppose, and listen to this, Susan, suppose you said, okay, you leave the development of the road within the development as conditioned. You don't require outside of that, going from 14 to 20, and you leave existing drainage, and you require that developer retain and repair any damage done to either the driveways or any, any of the slope and drainage problems that might be in there, and that they use their best, that the developer use its best effort to have each parcel there, or if they can do it legally, that they do, use their best efforts to join the existing maintenance agreement of the adjoining landowners, without saying that they have to, but just their best efforts to do that. You listen to that, Chris? You okay with that? Randy?
Well, you're certainly not imposing it upon them, I mean...
No, I'm not, because I don't, I don't, you know, I, I have difficulty saying you're going to impose something on, you know, when, when you're multi-party, but I think what's happening here is that, you know, there's a maintenance issue, and it's going to be solved, you know, it only benefits all of them if they can take care of all, all the units together, so, I mean, and I, and I think that, Chris, if you put that on the record, you know, at least that, you know, we'll know that, you know, that was the intent here, is to create, to expand that maintenance, existing maintenance agreement so that they'd all share in those access roads going out. And one other, go ahead.
And in the interest of what Al had to say about Carson City and Douglas County, maybe the city manager should look into a by-county agreement, what that would involve, there's going to be more development on that road, and the reality is, at some point, we're going to have to deal with drainage, maintenance, so forth, on a larger scale. All the homeowners are, I, I just think that there's some, some sort of agreement that's going to have to be come to.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that. You need, I mean, it's, it's a, it's not exactly a conundrum, but it's pretty close, I mean, because we've got multiple jurisdictions, multiple state jurisdictions, because the Native Americans, the tribe owned part, and they're their own jurisdiction. I mean, it, so it's not, it's not something that is easily just say, go out and create a district and you're going to do it, but I think that, you know, that needs to be reinvigorated if we can do that, get Douglas County in and see what we could do, so, let's hear from Chris first, and then John, you go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to actually add one additional item to, to those proposed conditions. I think it would, to protect all parties involved, I think an inventory prior to construction of the existing facilities, the roadways, the drainage facilities, you know, photographs, kind of, you know, just really mapping what's out there now, that way, you know, if any damage is caused, you know, everyone's going to know who's responsible for what and, and what the extent's going to be, I think that would be kind of beneficial for all parties involved.
Okay, I think that, that helps to assign liabilities, that's a good move, all right, John, I'm sorry.
Just a question, is this project still economically viable with the discussion we've had today, that sort of thing?
Yeah, you know, the way this project has always been proposed is, the market's really going to drive custom lots. You know, the, the developer as a whole is really just going to be responsible for the, the infrastructure of the road and the, and the drainage requirements up to city code, and then at that point, really, you're going to have lots for sale. So, you know, if, if, if the market drives the lots to be sold and homes to be built, so they will be. So as far as the additional, you know, conditions placed on as far as, you know, really, I think it's just being a good neighbor. I think, you know, repairing a roadway that if you, construction traffic, you know, destroys a roadway, I think it's your responsibility to fix it. And I think if you're providing access, if you're gaining access through a, you know, a legal public access easement to your property, you should contribute, you know, to the maintenance of that, of that roadway. So I, I don't think, you know, this is adding any additional cost at all.
So all we're doing here today is approving your subdivision and access to it, and then what happens next? You sell a lot and then we have to deal with that homeowner and explain to him why?
No, so what'll happen, today you're approving the tentative map, and then the secondary phase would be recordation of the final maps. You know, at that point, that is where the water, the sewer is going to be taken care of. Obviously, you know, the state and NDP are going to have to sign off on the map, you know, to ensure that we've met all the requirements, there was water testing and other things that were, that were put upon us. At that point, you'll have a final map, which the lots can be sold. So with that, and the conditions that have been placed upon us from the city, a lot of those items are going to be listed actually on the final map, as far as access, the fact that there is kind of a gray area with Old Clear Creek Road, it's legal access, I think all of that stuff is actually going to be set in stone with the final map, not actually with this phase. You're, what we're doing is placing conditions which need to be met at the final map stage. So at that point, if that's recorded, you know, that really sets the parameters for going forward. So there won't, you won't really have to deal with, with an additional property owner because all of that stuff will be laid out on their map.
So today, are we, do we have a dispute between your group and the other homeowners around there, or is everybody in pretty much agreement?
No, I think we are, you know, I think we, we made our very best effort, we had, you know, a neighborhood meeting at, at Peg's Home, which I would like to thank her for, you know, her hospitality, you know, we, throughout the process, tried to be as transparent as possible, you know, we understand when there's existing homeowners, you know, you, you want to be as, as good a neighbor as possible. So, you know, we've had open, open dialogue, open communication, and, you know, we understand their, their points of view, and, and they're very valid, and we're doing everything we can to work with them.
Okay, anybody else want to add anything? How about this?
I'd like to add something real quick.
Oh, go ahead.
If I could. Danny Roder, engineering manager, Public Works. I just wanted to kind of outline how we got to the 20-feet access from Old Clear Creek up. During the public comment process prior to the planning commission, there was concern about, it's too narrow, we can't pass each other, we need, you know, this needs to be addressed. Well, when we sat down and looked at it with the fire department, this is really a glorified extended residential driveway, and it meets residential driveway standards from Old, Old Clear Creek Road up. And when we looked at it, we said, if this came in today with the six, the six parcels and the other 12, and they said, we're going to put 20 parcels here, what would we say? Well, we'd, we'd say just what that road is there meets a minimum standard for fire code and access and everything. So the comment, the addition of the 20 feet was based on looking at it as a true private access instead of an extended road driveway. The, the condition reads that it'll be 20 feet, but due to the unique circumstances of the project, full-depth reconstruction will not be required, and we, I wanted to make sure to add in there with the fire department, final access improvement shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineering and fire department prior to final map approval. I wanted to make the other point that it's the urban wildland interface, which is part of why we had, we looked at it and said the 20 feet would be necessary. One of the things that may work out and might be a negotiation between the, the homeowners and the applicant would be some turnouts, where a fire, fire truck or, or car can pull out and the fire truck could get through, and I think that might address some of the concerns there, which is why we tried to leave that final approval with the engineering and fire department, if that provides some insight.
Okay, well, it seems to me that, you know, we could have them, and just, just what I'm hearing, just trying to move it across the line, is that there could be a motion to approve the tentative map with three criteria that we've discussed here today. One is to do a property inventory with, in a, in a requirement that I think is already the law, but we'll make it a requirement of the condition that the developer correct and repair any development damage done by it, period. Two, that the developer use its best efforts to join the existing maintenance agreement of those folks to join it, and that we've already got on the record that they intend to do that, if they can, if, if, they intend to do that, okay. Matter of fact, I think what you can say, well, just leave it like that, because I don't want to have, I don't, I don't want to put one party or the other in a, in a problem there, but I think that with, just put that in there, that'll be fine, and then on the 20 feet, remove the 20-foot requirement and leave in there, final, final access improvement shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer and fire department prior to a final map and let it go, I mean, we're going to have to see what it does.
Has the public still have access to the podium?
Sure, come on up, we're just talking thoughts here.
My name is Steve Grinelli, I live at 4680, and actually...
Go back, go back to the... Could you put it up on the colored map, and could you show the, could you point the arrow to Highway 50 where the, right, okay. So here, here's the thing, I think we have to be realistic and we have to be able to cite real-life experiences. Two things happened yesterday, but before getting to that, let me just say that, to think that Douglas County and this county and an Indian tribe are going to get together and fix Old Creek, Clear Creek Road, that's not going to happen before this development starts, if you approve it. So let's get that out in the open. The second thing is that Old Clear Creek Road is a dangerous road, and I'm sorry, Susan, I don't think you drive that road often enough to have the experience that I do or my family. If you bring heavy equipment onto that road over a protracted period of development of this, these parcels, when do you repair it? Should the road be repaired prior to the heavy equipment, and then over, let's say, every year, some repair is done, and then at the very end, when all six of these parcels are developed, you go ahead and fix it one more time and you're done? So now we have a nice road? Or do you just tear the road up horribly so during the development, which could go on for a decade? And I would also say that, in all due respect to the engineering firm, you're not an economist and you cannot predict whether or not these lots are going to sell, you don't have that criteria.
No one can predict the economy. It could be that these lots may sell immediately and be developed quickly, and then the road can be fixed, but I don't see that happening, I, I think that's very difficult to predict. With regard to the 20-foot road, I, I have to drive down that road prior to the easement road onto this development and then pass it. That road is dangerous, it's dangerous now. It's also quite steep, and during the winter months, you have to go very slow, and when a car comes up the road, both cars have two wheels off the road. So to think that you can get away with the existing road, the width of the existing road, I don't think you can. I don't know how many cars will be added to this road once the development is complete, but if there's six homes, wouldn't you think that there would be 12 cars or maybe more cars than 12? So the traffic volume goes up and you need a wider road, and I, and I think that's, that's pretty simple-minded. The, the, the real issue that I have is that you're not going to get the two counties to agree to improve that road, and it, I think you have a bit of a political perfect storm going on right now. And I say that because the politics and the money not being appropriate to develop Old Clear Creek Road is one issue, the tribe doesn't want to be involved, that's another issue, the road is so poorly maintained and dangerous that I'd like, like to make a suggestion, and I'm not be, and I am being serious, I would like to take Randy Munn in a car that I own, that is a very high-performance car with a modified suspension, and it has a racing seat in the passenger side as well, and I'll strap you in with a four-point harness, and I'll take you on that road at the same speed that somebody we don't know was driving in the opposite direction yesterday. Two events happened yesterday that you need to know about. One is a man was driving almost 60 miles an hour across the midline, and I had a swerve to my right to get around him, he had a swerve to his right. That might, you know, you, that's not the right thing to do, but on a road that is so poorly maintained with potholes and grave eating and the condition of the asphalt, can imagine, imagine if that were during the wintertime? So you, you have these issues about development, and the other thing would be that you're, you're inviting litigation. I mean, imagine if I were driving on that road, hit a pothole created by an 18-wheeler to develop Mr. Schultz's property so that he can make a, a fair amount of money, which he has a right to, and my son is killed in that accident. You know, o, over what? Politics, right? Two counties can't get it together to maintain a road.
It's not just two counties, I mean...
I, I know it's a complicated issue.
I mean, it's more, it's two counties, the Native American tribe and private property owners.
Right.
That, that all have an interest in it, and, and, you know, I don't see it as politics, I see it as money. I mean, it is money, I mean, because money being no object, and, and if the tribe wanted to have access, because I think the tribe really has come, come where you are, let's shut off access, period, and, and that, they've put that on the table in past negotiations with us, so, you know, I, I don't see it as politics, I see it as people, you know, wanting to protect their interests there, and also money, about who has to pay for the, for the road. And I, and I guess I'd ask you, you know, at, at the end of the day, I, I understand exactly what you're, what you're saying, is that, then you go back to what Supervisor McKenna said, is you ought to just say no to further development on Clear Creek Road, period.
No, sir, I didn't say that, and I would not suggest that. What I'm saying is that the, that the current owner of this property, who has a financial investment in developing it, repair Old Cle, Clear Creek Road to the point where it's safe, and that, and I, that should be done prior to the development. should be done prior to the development of his own property--
The entire road?
At least enough of it to make a dent in it. Because right now, here's the problem. If the road is going, is the road going to be damaged with the heavier equipment being brought in over a protracted period of time? Yes. Oh, I don't see how you could deny that. I'll be happy to drive you up there, Mayor, if you want to see--
No, look, I've been, I do go there, and I haven't been in a high, strapped in four points, but I've been up there, and--
It's a beautiful car. I can get you in that car.
You know, and I've even jogged that road before, a lot of there, up there. So, I know exactly what you're saying. I guess, you know, at the end of the day, I think, you know, it's all well and good, and I facetiously said, "Hey, put on the developer to fix Clear Creek Road." That, I think that's an onerous, you know, that as much as says to the developer, the Schultz folks, who I don't know at all, you know, your property is, you know, it is what it is, don't develop on it, because, look, nobody's going to, nobody can afford to fix up Clear Creek Road. I mean, that's just where it is. I don't, I don't know--
Then you must be agreeing with me that it's a bit of a perfect storm.
Well, it is a perfect storm, but it pits, it pits private property rights, I mean, I guess, you know, that you could say, "Well, let's not subdivide it or put a tentative on it, you know, at all," and then let them just go put four homes on it. I think they can do that under existing law, just, you know, put a plat map out there for four sites and go on. I mean, without anybody's approval, I think they can do that. I mean, because they just go do a deeds and split it up. Maybe you can't do that anymore.
They still have to do a parcel map to create the parcels, but it's not as significant of a process as the tentative map, so.
Okay. It's an enigma, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I just think that if somebody gets hurt on that road, I think the board of supervisors, you know, you're going to have to take some of that responsibility. And I mean, that road has a history of being poorly repaired. It is dangerous. It's obviously worse in the winter, as all roads are, not unique to that road. And then, now you're going to wear the heck out of that road with this heavy equipment, and it, and these lots may be developed over a period of three years or 15 years. You just don't know.
What happens if the equipment comes down, doesn't come away?
No, the Department of, that was actually brought up at the last meeting, is that that turn that they can bring off of Highway 50 is too dangerous for 18-wheelers or any kind of access. So, they cannot come off of 50. They have to come off of Old Clear Creek Road, unless you have a different--
I don't have the answer to that.
Well, I don't know what 18, I mean, it could, but I don't mind putting a condition there that says you're going to use the north, the west access to develop. Go on. Come off Spooner. Chris, I mean--
I mean, obviously, I don't know the extent of NDOT's appetite for allowing us to do that. Really difficult for me to stand here and say, "Sure, that sounds great," if they say absolutely not. You might as well have us fix the whole road.
Why would NDOT complain? Would, NDOT would, NDOT would object to that because of the turning radius coming off the highway there?
I don't know. I don't know why they would. I don't know, I can't speak for them. There could be numerous reasons. It could be traffic. It could be site triangles. It could be all kinds of things. And I think this really comes back to the way we started this. I think we have two separate issues. I think we have, there was a solution to fix a problem in 2009. The solution didn't happen. That was prior to any development up there. Now, I think the proposal or the request of, you know, subdividing lots up there has brought it back to the attention of people. Obviously, yes, they are two separate issues, but they're obviously co-mingled. I think anybody who has property up there currently, it's in their best interest to make sure you have legal access and appropriate access, you know, moving forward or, you know, for new development or for existing development. I think they're one and the same. I completely understand where, and like I said before, I completely understand where the residents are coming from, but to have six lots bear the burden for 40 lots that have been up there the entire time is a little bit unfair. Paying your fair share, which now goes from, you know, one lot to six lots? Great. I think there's a solution out there for Old Clear Creek Road, but I don't know that it's very fair to put the burden completely on one property owner.
I have to agree with Bob. I think that, I think maybe one of the conditions is that the development of Schultz Ranch is required to use the Highway 50 access. As Al stated, it's two miles up the road. They used 18-wheelers to build that off-ramp and that interchange. They can simply go up, turn around, come back, avoid that dangerous turn. I understand they can't come up from Carson and make that sharp hairpin, but they can certainly come down the other way and enter, and I just think that would save wear and tear on the road ultimately, and then the property owners and the new people coming in can help work together on maintaining the road.
Okay. I want to just get some clarification. Are you talking about using the new interchange and coming down, not using the emergency access into the property? Okay. I'm fine with that.
Is that doable?
I'm sorry. I have, I don't get this. I'm sorry. If you can't come off of Highway 50--
Can you show the, where he's talking about?
You come, you take the interchange, you double back, and you take the access road that this development is creating, their emergency access road, to bring in your trucks and your equipment.
The NDOT will not allow that.
Coming from this, from, coming from the Carson direction or coming down?
Coming from Lake Tahoe down to Carson City.
They won't allow that.
They will not allow that. The only way would come, be to come onto my property, and I'm not going to allow that because then they destroy the road that's paved. And so, the only way to bring in the heavy equipment is to you either come from Carson City--
Okay.
--or the golf course, the full length of Old Clear Creek Road. Either come up or you come down. So, that's a bogus way to bring--
Well, doesn't that tear up the other folks' entry into their property if they utilize that access?
What I'm saying is from the golf course, heading down to Carson City, or Carson City, once you leave Carson City-maintained Old Clear Creek Road and you enter the privately-owned road--
I see what you're saying. Okay.
You can only come in one of those two directions.
I see what you're saying.
And the shorter distance, I believe, if you're talking about tearing up asphalt, would be to come from Carson up the paved road that is maintained by the county.
Mm-hmm.
And then, once you pass that, that distance is the shortest amount of asphalt that will be destroyed.
Okay.
Okay, without, Chris, I think where, what I'd like to say, what I'd like to do, rather than, I'd like to put this on hold for a minute and have you guys, the developer, go back, and me with the homeowners there, and come to it and see if you can resolve this last issue. If you want us to vote up or down, we can do that.
I want to make sure I understand the issue.
Sure.
I want some clarification as far as, is this using the proposed emergency access road for development purposes, for delivery of materials, et cetera? Or is this using the new interchange and then come from the west on Old Clear Creek Road?
Using the access road.
So, using the emergency access road?
Yes.
Okay, again, that, I can't speak for NDOT to determine whether or not they would allow us to use that.
Well, I think we need to know that, and I agree with what, you know, I think it is, it's unreasonable to, I think it's unreasonable to put on one lot up here, you know what, you're going to put a home there, you're going to drive a, you know, because I could put one home there and make that big driveway going up there. I have to have that. And then, but for people to tell me that I've got to have, I've got a responsibility for Clear Creek down near the end, it's a little bit onerous, but it seems to me that there ought to be a way where you can work this out. And if the homeowners say, "Hey, there's no way we can work this out, tell me now, and we'll just make a decision and go on."
Can we, can I request a recess for a few minutes so we can kind of at least get our heads around this and see where we're going, or at least, I don't know, how do you guys recommend?
We're fine with a recess if you want to talk with the property owners.
Just five minutes to see. I think really, it's, you know, talking over with the client, seeing what the deed allows for as far as access, and then really seeing the ultimate goals of the property owners.
All right. You know, because we've got another one--
Yeah, I hear you.
--issue coming up here, too, so, and we'll see if we can get, so, since everybody's here in the room, I know, if somebody feels uncomfortable talking right now, let me know. Because what we're going to do is take a five-minute break, 10-minute break, go out, and the developer can talk to the homeowner. Is that okay with everybody or not?
Mr. Mayor, obviously, that's fine with us. While I have a lot of the residents here, I just got an update from our fire chief on the Jacks Valley fire. So, concurrent with, with a break here, I'd like to provide an update while they're all in the room. If I may?
Do it.
Okay. Well, I'll start with the good news first, but it's all good news, but I'll start with the best news first. All the residents are allowed back into the community at this time. If you do have animals down at the Fuji Park Shelter, same thing for the animals, they're all allowed back up. Fire chief reports that he's not ready yet to call it under control, although he said that the situation looks good. Some of the heavy winds that were present earlier in the day have subsided. He thinks they're probably getting rain right now. It's about 20 minutes old, the information I have. I talked to him out in the hallway. Hand crews are going to remain in place, continuing to fight the remaining hotspots. And for the mayor and the board of supervisors, the fire never actually crossed in at Carson City proper. Therefore, our costs are really limited to the overtime that we've already incurred for the firefighters in terms of fighting the blaze. So, I just wanted to get you that information while you're all here.
All right. Very good. Well done. Okay. We'll be in recess until 4 o'clock, and then we'll see if we can resolve this, and if not, we're going to table this and move on to Governor's Square. And if not, we're going to table this and move on to the governor's square.[128.53]
Options with NDOT for providing temporary construction access off Highway 50. We will make every effort to do so. Again, because we don't have NDOT in the room, we cannot speak to what their answer is going to be. If it is putting in a D cell lane or just flat out saying no, we're only tied to what they're going to allow us to do. And then, as I understood it, the second issue was maintenance of the private road that accesses off Clear Creek and timing of fixing that if it is damaged during construction. So two different roads, two different issues.
So show them where, show on the, use your map and tell them what, the pointer, so it would be, which roads there then?
All right. So, related to, are you going to do it?
You want me to do it?
Okay. All right. So, this is my understanding. Related to providing access for construction on a temporary basis, what the applicant's representative is saying is that they will work with NDOT to gain access in this, it's this road here, I think, at this location for the construction of the development improvements, correct?
Yeah, again, and for the record, if it's feasible.
Right. You will work with them if, yes, okay.
If NDOT is putting, you know, extending conditions on us and stuff.
The ro, the new road that needs to be constructed as a part of the final map is the road within the boundary of the yellow line, and that will need to be bonded for, either bonded for or constructed prior to the recordation of the final map. That's the roadway within the yellow boundary.
No, I wasn't.
Yes, that, that, that is a standard condition of approval, that that roadway will be constructed. The other iss, or bonded for. The other issue is this roadway here, the existing driveway down to Old Clear Creek Road, they need to have provisions in place that that portion of the road will be repaired after construction if construction traffic goes that way, correct? And they will work with engineering to determine what is acceptable in either the form of widening, which I believe, based on what Danny said, is not necessary, but turnouts may be, as a part of this approval. Did I get it?
Not to me, no.
Well, let me interject one thing. Chris also mentioned he will do an inventory of that roadway. With pictures, and that, if any damage is done to that roadway, you would repair it back to the original status as you took those pictures. That was part of the presentation as well. The widening of the road will be up to the fire department. That is the condition, if I understand it. Am I overstepping my bounds?
Engineering and the fire department would have the ultimate say on the final improvements of the existing road, which is this road from Clear, from Old Clear Creek Road, the driveway that exists up here, to the boundary of the subdivision. That's the-
Steve, why are you still concerned then?
There's actually one, two, three, there's five issues, which I can summarize quickly. Access off of 50, so that's NDOT.
Right.
The bonded development of roads within the yellow line representing the development.
Right.
The third issue is, can you go from that yellow line, the road that, the, the road within our residential neighborhood?
Right.
And then, okay, that road, there's two issues. One is widening.
Right, we got that solved.
And, and, no, I don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe it's solved, because I think we were, we were under the understanding that it was going to be 20 feet wide, because cars can't pass.
Okay, but here, here's, here's the deal. I mean, and, and if, because, you know, from my perspective, a lot of these issues should have been worked out at the planning commission before it came up here. I mean, and it's nobody's fault that it didn't, but I've got homeowners out here who say, leave it at 14 feet, and I have other homeowners saying at 20 feet. That's what we're hearing today. So what the, the answer was, is, okay, leave it to engineering and the fire department to determine what that road requires from a public health and safety standpoint on that issue.
Who's the engineering?
Our engineers and our fire department.
Your engineers. Okay. And then the fifth issue, the fifth issue is the simple risk of driving on that road, Old Clear Creek Road, could you point that out with an arrow, please? That is where, in my opinion, there will be no improvement from the county, either county. I don't see that in the near future. You're going to destroy the road, it increases the risk of driving, and I think at the very least, one of you, I've offered to do it with the district attorney in an SUV. If he would ride that road, and not just one time, sir, multiple times, and wait till a car comes in the opposite direction, on the quality of the road now, and then subtract, subtract 15 to 30 percent quality of, of road quality.
Okay, well, hey, Steve, hang on a minute, we're not, this isn't the cross-examination and stuff like that, we're trying to make an informed decision here, and I got what you're, I got what you're saying. I'm, I'm not certain that, as we discussed a little bit ago, that, first of all, we're going to find out if NDOT can allow them to do there. The second one, if you require them to put, you know, a developer of any lots up there to say, look, you're going to put a stress, further stress on Clear Creek Road, therefore you shouldn't be, either fix Clear Creek Road or don't build, is what you're saying. I mean, that's, that's-
Improve it, improve it.
Yeah, improve it or don't build. Now, that's going to be, that's going to be, you know, essentially what that's going to say to me, I think, is going to say, you know, there'll be no further building up there, okay? And that's where we are. I mean, and that, I got that, I understand that. I don't think that's going to realistically happen, that's about, you know, because there's people who have lots up there.
That, that's why I said it's a perfect storm, sir.
Well, it is a, I, you know, I agree with you, a perfect storm, so, I mean, I guess, you know, that's what we get paid to, what is to-
You don't get paid enough, sir.
Really, but I think what we're going to try-
I'd be happy to raise my taxes to pay you more, by the way.
No, you're, you're, you're fine. So what we're going to, what we're going to try and do is, is this, we're going to try and, one, I want, we're going to do this tentative approval, subject to what that, what NDOT says to you, okay? Then we're going to, if, if there's a problem of doing that, I want it back here, so we can make a decision. I mean, it may have to go to planning, I don't know, but I know it shouldn't. All right. I, I think, Steve, I got where you are.
Okay, thank you.
Let's try a motion up here and see where we go. Go ahead.
And my only comment was that the city manager is going to look into a tax increment discussion with Douglas and Carson City, see where it goes. There's more development coming, so we have to figure out how to maintain this road in some way, shape, or form.
I agree with you. All right, well, let's, let's do this, let's entertain a motion that, that we approve this subject to the following conditions. One, that the 20-foot, that the 20-foot requirement in, in item, in condition number 22 is removed with the, with the, leave in there the statement that the final access improvement shall be reviewed and approved by city engineering and fire department prior to final map approval, which that means, if you leave that in there, that means that there will be a decision as to whether or not that road should stay at 14, or go to 20 feet, or whatever smaller amount is required for the public health and safety in, 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 in that regard. And that the developer will be responsible if, if it, for any, any off-site damage done, development damage done, along that, that access road, that's the one that goes up from Clear Creek all the way up into the property. If they use that, be responsible for all that, 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 another one would be that the developer use, the developer use the access off of Highway 50, unless NDOT says no, and if that case, we want it back here for further discussion. And, pardon me?
Maintenance agreement?
And that they do their, and that they use their best efforts to join an existing maintenance agreement for the property owners of the south.
An inventory.
An inventory of the access. You understand what I'm saying, Chris? I want you to, you know, I could, I can just, if you want, if you want, that's kind of where I sense this board going. If you want to just take some time and go ask NDOT what their requirements are, then we can just table this and bring it back at the next meeting and figure out, you know, where we are on it.
I, I think we're fine with that. I don't know, and I might want to, is that, does that function? Can we go with a tentative approval of a tentative map?
Yeah, actually, I was kind of wondering about that, too. So maybe Randy, can you weigh in on that?
Well, if not, then, you know, if, if there's a problem with that, then we'll, we'll entertain a motion to delay this for two weeks until, until you bring it back, find out what NDOT says on the access. Okay? I mean, that's all I can do, because we've got, I mean-
Yeah, it won't be.
All right. So unless there's an objection, we will, we will table this until the next regular scheduled board meeting, the soonest we can get it on. I want you to talk to the owners, I want you to talk to NDOT, come back and let's get it solved. And I think that for your posture, and for the homeowner's posture, this board is not, you know, if they, if they approve this, they're not looking at requiring a developer to, to fix Clear Creek Road.
Okay.
All right? Understand-
The only thing, the only thing the board, maybe I should begin on a turn, would be that the Clear Creek Road would be left in the manner it is today. So in other words, you would do your inventory, as you stated, and after, after your work, if you damaged that road, then you would repair it. Am I understanding that correctly?
Our inventory wasn't actually including Old Clear Creek Road, it was just including-
The access road after.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so we're continuing?
These things happen, but this is stuff that should be worked out at the planning commission level, and I, and again, it's no fault of anybody, but, you know, that's where we, we do these things. But if it can't get resolved at the planning commission level, bring it back here, and as Steve said, we'll earn our money, or lack of money, so. But I'd encourage the homeowners, you know, keep an open mind about Clear Creek, and you hit the nail on the head, that it's, it's a conundrum, it's a perfect storm, I mean, it's happening, and so the question is, you know, take, let's try and accommodate private property rights with the desire of the community up there, not to have that road further beaten up. I think that's where we are, okay? You okay?
I don't really, to be quite frank. Here's, here's my concern. I'm pretty confident that NDOT's going to say no, standing here before you today.
I guarantee it.
I mean, I'm hearing two supervisors guaranteeing it. I don't know that tabling this to ask the question when we know the answer is maybe the best solution. That's my concern. Absolutely will, you know, if that's the direction that Mr. Mayor, you recommend that, Scotty?
Bring it back in two weeks, and tell us what NDOT says, so we know, okay? And I think I know where we're going, but I think we need to have that question answered first.
Okay.
Okay?
Understood.
And I'm not trying to delay you guys, but I'm also trying to, you know, it's, it's, and these things, we're here to hear and listen and to try and make accommodations, you know, to get these things worked out, so that's what we're going to try and do. All right? Two weeks, bring it back. Okay, city manager? All right. Move on to the next item. Governor Square. Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Item 25B deals directly with my real estate investment in the subject property through a limited liability company, Stewart &amp; 50 Plaza LLC, that I own with my partner, Andy Wilson. Our LLC is a property owner in Governor Square PUD. Both Andy and I have a significant financial interest in this matter, and I therefore have a direct conflict of interest. NRS 281A.420 subsection 1 subsection B requires more than my mere abstention from the vote. The law requires my complete recusal from acts to approve, disapprove, vote, abstain from voting, or otherwise act upon a matter. Therefore, Mr. Mayor and Board, I intend to sit in the audience to listen to the board's consideration in this matter. If my testimony regarding my property becomes necessary, I will limit my testimony to the facts as I understand them, and avoid any advocacy regarding this matter.
Okay.
May I be excused?
You're excused.
Thanks.
Don't go, bring dinner back. All right. We're going to take up the issue of the Governor Square ma, matter. I think we've all read what, was it the planning commission? We've all read the notes, we understand what happened there. We are now going to take this up here and see if we can, how it comes out, okay? And let's all keep a level head about what we're doing, and as an old law school professor mindset, you know, it'll all come out in a wash, if you've got a good enough washing machine, and I think we've got a pretty good washing machine here. So let's see what we can do, all right? All right. So I want you to brief the issue, and while you brief the issue, I want you to tell us what the criteria are for approval, and criteria for disapproval, and exactly what, I want you to tell us that, is this, is this an amendment of a planned unit development map? Is it a zoning change, or what? So what you're, I want to know what this board is legally required to decide or discuss in making these decisions, okay? And when we do this, so that the public knows, the way these usually work, and the way it's going to work this afternoon, is we will have a presentation by the staff, and then I think that, did anybody formally appeal this?
No, it was not formally appealed.
So it's just here to make us feel good, right?
No, you are required to vote on a PUD amendment.
Right, okay. All right, so what we're going to have is, we're going to have the staff make a, make a presentation, and then we will ha, and explain what happened at the planning commission, explain what the recommendation is here today, then we want to hear from the homeowners, and then we're going to hear from the owners or developers, and then we'll go back and hear from any homeowners, if they want to, what they want to say, and then we're going to see if we can come back and make a decision. Got that, everybody? All right. Go.
Okay. If I forget something, remind me of something that I haven't specifically addressed. All right. This is-
Because I'm being fast here, doesn't mean to want to give short shrift to any of this, so don't, don't anybody get that idea. I mean, I just want to make sure that it's organized and that we're on track, okay?
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Susan Dorpansky. This is a request from applicant Mark Turner to modify the existing Governor Square planned unit development to convert six existing commercial lots to residential uses in the form of duplexes. This is the subject property. The original PUD had 48 residential units in the form of attached townhomes, and six individual commercial parcels that are shown in the blue. All onsite improvements have been constructed to service not only the residential units, but also the commercial units. There are, the parking that you see along the vacant property here is parking that, per the original PUD approval, was specifically allocated to the commercial parcels. This is a photo of the property as it currently sits, you can see the residents along Barosa Way that exist, that would look out onto the currently commercial property and proposed residential duplex property. And then just another view of that from the other side of Rube Street. This is a modification to the original site plan that was approved as a part of the PUD approval back in, I believe it was 2005 or 2006. This shows essentially what was approved and constructed on the site. Again, 48 units with private roadways and parking throughout. The residences exist currently, the commercial lots were never developed. In the shaded area are six lots that the applicant has proposed a maximum of 12 residential units on. Right now, the configuration in this site plan shows 11 residential units, the very northern unit is actually only one. However, the applicant would like to retain the ability to potentially have a total of 12, so that each building would be a independent duplex. These are the elevation of the proposed duplexes, and the applicant has tried to make sure that these duplexes are compatible with the existing residential development of the PUD with stucco and stone, and the floor plans as well. And then another, another view of the elevations that are being proposed as a part of the duplexes. So I'm going to end my photo, or my actual slide presentation on this slide, and then talk a little bit about the, the PUD modification, the recommendations from staff, what happened at the planning commission, and how we're going to move forward. Staff determined, when we received this application, that a PUD modification of the original approval would be appropriate, given the fact that the applicant was going to be varying the proposed gross density of the number of units. They're proposing to go from 48, that was originally approved, to 60, with the addition of 12. The involvement of a reduction of the area set aside for common or private open space, or modify the maintenance agreements, and they are proposing a modification of maintenance agreements related to these structures specifically, and to vary the substance of the CCNRs that were approved as part of the original proposal. They are proposing to do a modification to the CCNRs to address just the 12 duplexes. They will have their own separate set of CCNRs that staff has recommended be compatible with the CCNRs on the existing residential units. The density within the project, and, and I'll note that this zoning district where the PUD currently exists is neighborhood business, and the density under the Carson City master plan in this area, which is high-density residential, is between eight and 36 units per acre, and this, the applicant is proposing, with this change, it would be 16 units per acre, which is up from the original 13 units per acre that was originally proposed as a part of the Governor Square PUD. And I'll note as well, this was approved under the name Tuscana Village, when it was, originally came before the planning commission and the board in 2005. The open space is not being proposed to be modified in size in any great form, they actually have a significant amount over the minimum requirement for PUDs, which is 30%. They have roughly 47% open space, and the applicant is not proposing to modify this in any significant way. I'll note that there is a possibility of lot line adjustments for the existing commercial lots to accommodate the duplexes. However, that remains to be seen, and any reduction in open space in that area would still leave them well over the minimum requirement. Related to parking, staff did a parking analysis to determine whether or not the proposal of 12 additional residential units would be appropriate, given the number of spaces that currently exist in the development. And what we determined is that the existing residential requires 96 spaces, guest parking requires 24, and then the commercial uses, as approved, required 29, for a total of 146 spaces. What actually exists in the development today are 156 spaces. So it, they are able to accommodate. And I'll note, related to the parking as well, with 12 residential units, the minimum parking requirement is 30 spaces. 29 spaces were originally proposed as a part of the commercial property, and so they would need to work out the allocation, I suppose, of the additional parking space with the homeowners' association, and we have made provisions for that. But overall, there is enough parking, and the, I, I want to reiterate again, that the parking on Barosa Way was always intended, under the original approval, to be allocated to the commercial uses, which are now being proposed to move to the residential uses. The applicant is also proposing to modify the CCNRs, and I mentioned that briefly. Staff finds this acceptable, we, as a part of the PUD approval, we, we require CCNRs as we require homeowners' association, however, we are not specific in how, what manner that those things take on specifically between the two entities. We would just note that we have provided a recommendation that any modification to the CCNRs for the benefit of the duplexes be compatible with the existing residential, so that we don't get into a situation where uses of the property with the duplexes causes a detriment to the existing residential properties. For example, if someone were allowed to park an RV in the parking spaces that would be allocated to the duplexes, that's not something that the original residents were allowed to do under their CCNR, so we would want to see something similar to ensure continuity. As it relates to the compatibility of adding residential as opposed to commercial to this PUD, staff finds that residential uses are compatible with existing residential uses, and the residential uses proposed with the duplexes are similar in nature to the multifamily residential uses that exist on the property today. So we find that they are compatible, and we have recommended approval of this PUD modification. With 54 conditions of approval, and that includes the original conditions of approval from the PUD, approval in 2005, as well as additional conditions of approval that specifically address the proposed modification to residential. At the planning commission, well, I'll back up and say, staff received seven emails or letters in opposition to this project from surrounding property owners, and included all of that in the original staff report. In addition to that, several property owners got up during the Governor Square item at the planning commission to express their concerns. In our memo related to this item that specifically comes before the board only, we have attempted to address what we believe were the majority of the concerns that were brought up at the planning commission, and I'll go over those quickly. The first one is the addition of residential units that would be exclusively rental properties, and the impact that they would have on property values. There has been no distinction between the property as residential development versus a business renting residences. And so, the staff's response to that is that we don't differentiate throughout the city between renting, rental properties and owner-occupied properties. They are residences, in, in our eyes, regardless of what, what the ownership is. As it relates to renting businesses as a property management company might do as a business, as opposed to an, an individual resident renting their own property, the only differentiation that staff makes at the business license level is that if you own more than three units, and this could be a business owning more than three units, or an individual owning more than three units, you are required to obtain a business license. And this relates to the concerns of the property owners, that if more rentals exist in the neighborhood, then that's going to reduce their property value. And staff does not have any basis to back up this claim, and staff does gener, does not generally look at that as a contributing factor on recommending approval or denial.
Is it permissible to look at different rent rates? Or is that against the law?
I don't believe that it is permissible.
I'll do it like that.
There are, I will note, several residences within the existing PUD, the 48 units, that are rentals currently. They may be owned by individual property owners, as opposed to a management organization or an LLC or a corporation, but they are rentals nonetheless. The capacity, capability of new residential units that have different rules than the current homeowners' association. So what, our response to that was that, under the current approval, we recognize that the new residences are being proposed to not abide by the exact same rules and regulations as the existing residences. However, what we've tried to do is to require that the CCNRs are compatible with the existing development, so that we can ensure that the compatibility exists between the two. The use of common open space, including the park in the center of the development by new residential occupants. On this issue, it's staff's responsibility to ensure that the common open space for the development as a whole meets the minimum requirements under planned unit development of 30%. of 30%. But we do not have the ability to dictate who among those existing property owners may or may not use that property. That would be something that needs to be addressed between the applicant proposing the residential use for the commercial properties and the existing Homeowners' Association. Traffic will be significantly increased-
Before we go and speak about open space, did you consider view and its view or detraction of view, V-I-E-W, a criteria that you use to evaluate changes to this type or not?
No, we wouldn't.
And why not?
Under the PUD requirements, we are required to make sure that 30% open space is provided, but it's not specified on whether or not that open space provides views or not.
I'm asking, I got you on the open space, but I mean, and I shouldn't have, maybe I jumped ahead of you here, Susan, but how about the people, you know, can you, the development in front of somebody's unit is going to hamper their view?
Sure, I understand, and that is something that had been brought up previously. What I'll note is that in the Neighborhood Business District, I believe the maximum height is 32 feet. I'll have to look and see for sure. So even the commercial properties that originally were approved, while some of them were proposed to be one-story and some of them were proposed to be two, theoretically, they could come back and construct two-story commercial properties regardless of the original approval, as long as they met the minimum height requirement of the Neighborhood Business District.
Maximum height.
Maximum height, thank you.
It's 26 feet of two-story.
26 feet is the maximum.
And what's the elevation on these?
I believe that the proposal is, it meets it or is just below.
So currently, this PUD allows for a height, a commercial height of 26 feet?
Commercial and residential.
Commercial and residential. And what's being proposed here, is there anything that says that they're asking for a height adjustment, a height waiver?
No.
So what's, is it really, okay, what, and I want you to complete here, I'm just trying to get in my own mind, you know, what we're asking, what's being asked here is a change from residential to commercial in the-
Commercial to residential, right.
Commercial to residential, the core of all this, that's what's being requested.
Correct.
I mean, nothing, no parking criteria changes, no height changes, no density changes, no nothing like that. This is just changes zoning on a PUD from commercial to residential, am I correct or not?
That's correct, although the density does change from 13 units an acre to 16.
The density changes, but it doesn't change in such a manner that it requires some form of special waiver or permit?
Not beyond the original, the modification of the PUD.
Right, okay, all right.
At what level would it require that change?
This area is master-planned, high-density residential, and anything below 36 units per acre as a part of the PUD could be considered under the modification.
With the proposed units going in, are we at that level or not?
We're going from 13 units per acre to 16 units per acre.
And that's not high-density yet? What is-
It's considered a part of high-density, yes, but the lower end of high-density. The maximum development units per acre in high-density is 36 units per acre. Other questions? Okay. So related to traffic, one of the concerns that was brought up by the public, traffic will be significantly increased with the new residential units versus the originally proposed commercial units. Now, staff inherently, just based on experience, understands that generally residential units have a lower traffic impact than commercial units. However, we did not initially have specific numbers to back that up, and as a result of this question and concern, we posed the question to a local traffic engineer that provided us with some traffic data related to the duplex uses versus the commercial uses. And what we did is we said 12 duplex units versus 9,000 square feet of office space. And we chose office space because office space in the realm of commercial is generally the least intense commercial use. And what the results were is that 12 duplex units would have an average daily trip count of 70 trips per day, and 9,000 square feet of office space would have an average daily trip count of 211 trips per day. No garages are proposed for the duplex units, and this will have significant impact on parking. As I had noted before, the original PUD approval had 29 spaces that were allocated specifically to the commercial uses. The addition of 12 residential uses in the place of the commercial would require 30 spaces, so there's a discrepancy of one that would need to be worked out. But on the whole, the parking along Barosa Way has always been intended for the commercial use and would now be allocated to the residential use. And it does meet the minimum requirements, provided that they get the one space that they need.
Susan, may I ask, on the building or the structures, they're there now, they all have garages, correct?
That's correct.
Is that part of the CCNRs, that they have to have garages?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. So these, the new structures that are going in, will not be similar in the appearance, per se, of having a garage? There'll be a difference in the structure itself, in that appearance, right?
That's true, they will not have garages, that's correct. So in that, from that standpoint, the appearance would be different, but the architecture is generally similar.
And you mentioned that the applicant would, his CCNRs would be similar to the existing CCNRs on the Governor's Square project, is that-
That is a condition of approval that we have proposed as staff, yes.
But it's not an, is it a necessity for this to go through, to have that agreement? Or does the applicant, must he comply with the CCNR aspect as you stated it?
Must he comply with the original CCNRs? If that can, you know, I would need to look at the CCNRs specifically related to how they are currently structured for the commercial uses, and whether, because I have heard from homeowners that the commercial uses are not currently part of the CCNRs. But from staff's standpoint, if, everything in the planned unit development needs to be subject to CCNRs in some manner or form.
And those, the new structures going in, they do not have access to anything on the Governor's Square? Can I call it Governor's Square? Is that the right terminology?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So the new structure, or the new citizens who may live in that dwelling do not have access to anything of the Governor's Square, although it is not fenced off. It is open to the general public, I guess, is the best way of putting it?
Well, no, I don't think that that's accurate. They would have access to it. What we had stated is that we don't have the ability as staff to limit access within the PUD. So, right, because it's all part of common open space.
So the new structures, the new dwelling going in, any tenant or homeowner who lives there can access all of the Governor's Square property?
Unless they make an agreement amongst themselves otherwise, yes. Because we look at the approval as an overall approval, as was per the original PUD.
So they'll have access to that, but they have a different CCNRs? The new dwellings will have new CCNRs, they won't have the existing CCNRs?
Right.
But they'll have access to all the Governor's Square?
What I'm saying is that we don't have the ability to prohibit the access. The specifics of the-
I don't mean to interrupt, can the homeowners?
If they make an agreement amongst themselves, I'm certain that they could. But that's not something that staff can dictate that they do.
Thank you.
So, so yes, it is true that the garages are not, garages are not proposed as a part of this development, and that, I believe, is largely in part because the improvements exist currently on the site and don't particularly lend themselves to garages. However, there is adequate parking within the PUD to allow the change from residential to commercial.
Commercial.
I'm sorry, commercial to residential. Thank you, no, it's better that you do. Adequate coordination with and notice from the Homeowners' Association has not occurred. This was something that was brought up extensively at the Planning Commission meeting. It had been represented to staff that the applicant had been working extensively with the Homeowners' Association. However, it seems that the Homeowners' Association may not have been providing that information to the individual property owners. From staff's standpoint, we noticed the surrounding property owners in compliance with the law under special use permit requirements. And I think that the Homeowners' Association president can likely address that a little bit more in his presentation. The development has poor traffic circulation due to the closure of several streets, and the addition of 12 residential units will have further impact on the community. So I'm going to refer you to the site plan and give you kind of an overview of what they're talking about. If you look on the, at the very top, you'll see some shaded areas at the top of Tuscana Way and Fonterra Way. Those are part of the original approval and were approved as emergency access in the original PUD. On the lower part of the screen, you'll see another street called Tesoro Way. That street was approved as a through access over to existing Figaro Way, and that access has since been closed off via bollards by the Homeowners' Association citing site distance concerns and drive-through traffic concerns. The fire department is aware of the street closure, and they approved the street closure of this last street with the idea that removable devices or a gate with knockbox access would be required, and the Homeowners' Association complied with that. But as a result, there are two main accesses into the property, one from the main entrance off Rup Street and one from the main entrance off of Randell, which is one less than what was originally approved. But again, I'll note that the two others that went off onto Randell have always been emergency access.
Can you show that? I'm sorry, Susan, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you show that on the map, the axis you were just talking about?
These two here, these two were originally, they were always proposed to be emergency access for the project. This here, on Tesoro Way, was originally approved, proposed and approved to be a main access out of the project. It has since been closed off by the Homeowners' Association with the approval of the fire department. What remains today are access points off of Rup Street here and off of Randell Drive here.
If I may just ask an additional question. Down at the bottom, are those parking stalls for visitors or for homeowners? Down at the bottom of the screen?
The parking below and the parking in the middle of the development are a combination of guest parking and additional parking as required for some of the units that don't have driveways long enough to house an additional car.
It's homeowners' parking, in some cases, and visitors' parking?
And guest parking, yes.
And along the new development would just be homeowners' parking only, no visitors?
And guest parking associated with those 12 units, yes. The 30 spaces includes guest parking per Carson City standards.
So 16 units are going in?
12.
12, I'm sorry, excuse me, 12. So each unit gets two-
Two and a half.
Two and a half, thank you.
Yes. So I'll note that the Homeowners' Association retains the right to open Tesoro at any time, should they choose to do so. The Planning Commission deliberated for quite some time and heard a significant amount of public comment on this item. There was an initial motion made by Commissioner Paul Eswin to deny the project on the basis that the Homeowners' Association, coordination with the Homeowners' Association had not been adequate, and because the change from commercial to residential was a significant departure from the original PUD approval. There was a full Planning Commission present, however, that motion did not carry, it was a vote of three to four. Then a new motion was put forth to approve the PUD modification, and that motion passed four to three. So as we're moving forward and we're looking at the approval of the project and what the Board needs to look at, I will refer you to the planning staff report. In your packet, on page 26, are findings under the planned unit development that are required to be met for both new and modified planned unit developments. There are a total of 11. Staff was able to make these findings as a part of the, as a part of the proposal, and I believe that answers the mayor's questions. And Lee is going to expand on that a little bit, thank you.
Susan asked me about this beforehand, and I checked with Randy, so I want to verify that indeed those findings on page 26 are part of the PUD findings that must be required, and we are properly considering the PUD findings as part of this amendment, just as you would with the original approval, so I wanted to clarify that. Just to go a little bit further and go back to Paul Eswin's motion and some of the findings identified in the PUD 17.09.050, where they do say that in approving it, you should consider with, in what respects the plan would or would not be in the public interest as it relates to, and there's a list of things that are primarily these, open space, infrastructure, adequate provision of public facilities, et cetera. However, one of them is in there also, is the relationship beneficial or adverse of the proposed planned unit development to the neighborhood in which it is proposed to be established. Therefore, I would note that Mr. Eswin's recommended finding for denial was proper under the findings of Carson City Municipal Code and a legitimate consideration, but as Susan mentioned, that vote for denial failed 3-4, and the vote for approval meeting the findings as identified in the staff-
Which finding did he use again, please?
Not, I'm not, let's see, on page five of your staff report, on the lower right corner, there's a page five, and after the, after the, let's see, the paragraph at the bottom that begins, "After extensive public testimony and deliberation," within that is Mr. Eswin's motion with the finding, starting on the second line, that the proposed modification would alter the neighborhood as originally approved, and he went on further, and that there has been insufficient coordination with the existing Homeowners' Association. But that relationship, and relationship beneficial or adverse of the proposed planned unit development to the neighborhood in which it is proposed to be established is a legitimate finding and rationale for a basis of denial or approval of the application.
I'm not seeing that in the city code. Could you point me to that? I mean, I'm with you on-
Yeah, it's not in the, it's not in the staff report, I'm reading directly from 17.0, I'm, the finding I'm looking, the paragraph I'm looking at is directly on the screen, on the screen in front of me, not in front, sorry. It's 1809.050. You will not find the- You will not find the, it is, it is essentially what Mr. S. Swine said in that paragraph is what I'm seeing, so the.
Number five.
That's 17.09.
I got page five, but I mean, no, but I mean, I know where that is, but I'm not seeing the, the actual language of the, of Carson City Municipal Code 17.07.005.
Not in the staff report.
But I'm looking at, I'm looking at, or those paraphrases on 26 and 27.
On which page?
26 and 27.
Those are additionally, those are right from section 17.07.005 of the code.
So what section?
So those are, those are all findings.
What section do you have on the screen?
You know, when I plugged it in, it jumped around on me here. Approval or denial of that, there we go.
Yeah, there you go, number five.
I'm highlighting there the one, the one that would apply to the motion that Mr. S. Swine made.
And that's what he's citing on, when you, when you read page five?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
That's what Mr., yes.
And in reference to what he's citing on page five, which you just read, is that correct? Thank you.
Are there, if you scroll down, is there something below six there?
There's not, no.
All right, so that's it, so that's it? All right, where are we now?
Yeah. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor, but I will note that the president of the homeowners' association, Riley Kerr, is here and would like to speak, I believe, on behalf of the majority of the homeowners and has prepared a PowerPoint presentation that encompasses all of their concerns in an effort to put them all together and not have a lot of repeating going on in public comment.
Sounds good. Who, who's here then?
Mr. Kerr.
Hang on, who's the homeowner president?
Mr. President.
Okay, come on up.
My name is Riley Kerr.
Hi, Riley.
1202 Tuscanaway, Governor Square. Before I start the presentation, this easement that they were talking about in the PUD is a very important part of the total picture here, and we have Gail Kern here with us today, who is our attorney, and I'd like for her to explain what that easement's all about.
Hi, Gail.
Thank you. I appreciate this and I, for the record, Gail Kern and the attorney representing Governor Square Homeowners Association.
Very good.
I wanted to address this first because I think this overlay actually cuts to the chase. There is a significant problem with the consideration of this proposal for the following reason. The land that they are talking about, that the parking spaces have already been allotted, is not part of this project. It is owned by the homeowners' association. The PUD, as it originally existed, contemplated and provided that a homeowners' association would be established for purely the residential property. Included within that is common area. All of the parking spaces that they are asserting would be used for this, these residential duplexes is owned by the association, subject to an easement that is recorded and is only to be used for commercial property. Therefore, this application cannot go forward unless there is a new easement executed for residential property.
I got you, I got you. Have you looked at the easement? Do we, did you have a copy of it, Gail?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I do.
No, no, it, no, I mean, it was discussed by Riley Kerr at the planning commission meeting, however, we have not seen the easement, and I'd like to note that under the original PUD approval, those spaces were allocated to the use that's proposing to be changed.
Right, I got you, but I mean, she made it, I mean, she said that the easement is, relates to commercial and doesn't, it doesn't address residential. So, I mean, I need to, I think, I think I need to know that answer.
Well, so going back to her original statement, that we, we consider this as, as a complete PUD, so they have split it up themselves between, between this commercial property and the, and the, and the residential property.
That's correct.
This is new, this is new inform, this is not how the easement was represented to the planning commission and not how it was represented to us. And the availability.
I got you, I think, but what?
And, and this may very well be a flaw in their ability to build it, but again, if, if we look at this and approve, if the city approved a plan that include, that changed these, commercial to residential there, if in fact there's some legal flaw in that internally, then it would not, then it would not, it would effectively not happen.
Well, I got you, but, but correct me, Lee, if I'm wrong. If the easement speaks only to, to commercial, and that's, that's, that easement runs to the benefit of the homeowners' association, I got you that, that, that it doesn't necessarily impinge upon the, the zoning change that's being asked for, what you've properly analyzed, or, you know, I think you properly analyzed, but what, but what it says is, is that if you, if you don't have the right to those spaces, then the parking is off. I don't understand it. I mean, maybe I'm missing something here, but.
Absolutely correct.
Do you have copies of that? Can our DA read it?
I, I've got my copy, I apologize, I don't have, I, I would have assumed that, that staff would have had this in the packet, I apologize. The easement and cost sharing agreement is a recorded document, is file number 391318. It was recorded July 6, 2009. If you put up, if I could ask you to put up that map that was up for a moment ago that showed the, that, exactly. If you look at where the dark areas are on the left, and there is a line, and then there's the parking spaces, that is an actual property line. This is no longer all owned by one entity. The property line is on that right side of those, the proposed dark duplexes, and all of the parking spaces that are identified is part of the common area and owned by the association. It is those areas that are subject to the easement.
All right, I, I think.
That's not actually, that's not correct.
I got it.
Yes, it is. So, this is.
Hang on, we're not going to get into argument.
These are the parcels, these are the parcels as they exist. The common area surrounds the six parcels.
No, no, I'm sorry, ma'am, but the, the, where the green line is, to the right of that, where it's all shaded, that's homeowners' association, that is the homeowners' association. It is made up of common area as well as, of course, the individual units. But where the parking is and where it's been identified as being part for the proposed duplexes, all of that is common area and owned by the association.
All right.
And the parties entered into an easement in 2009.
All right, I, I need to, we need to have this answered. Okay, so maybe, Mark, do you want to, Gail, just hang, hang tight there, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Mark, come on up. What property, what's the title report say to this piece of property?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Mark Turner, our understanding about the easement for the parking is that the easement, the, the, the zoning for the, the property is neighborhood business, is that, am I correct on that? Okay, so, our, our ability to use the parking exists because duplexes are a suitable use under neighborhood business, is that correct?
Without a PUD, they're suitable with the approval of special use permit.
Okay, so, we had, we had begun this process by working with planning, and planning had suggested that the PUD modification was the correct path to travel to get to where we wanted to get to so that we could construct duplexes on, on the property, given the fact it was residential or adding to the residential count of the PUD, that's the path we chose. Our, our ability to use the parking, we believe, exists as a result of duplexes being allowed under a neighborhood business zoning.
Okay, well, I, I got you there. I, I really need to see, I mean, because what, being told by Gail, by their homeowners' association, is that they own the underlying, homeowners' association owns the underlying fee under those parking spaces and that the easement was given over those parking spaces for commercial use by a commercial entity on the non-fee-owned property. That's what I'm getting. Is that right or wrong?
And perhaps the question is, is, what is the definition of commercial that would allow the use of, of the parking easement?
Well.
And perhaps, how is, if, if duplexes are allowed under the neighborhood business zoning, how is that not appropriate in this instance?
Because the neighborhood, the neighborhood zoning, and, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to figure out what's happening here because.
No, I understand, we're trying to work through this.
The zoning is one thing. The legality of an easement, of who owns the property affects what you can do with the property. And I assume you don't want to buy the property with an easement on it that says you can use parking only for commercial.
Exactly.
Well, I think that's what she's telling us, that, that exists, and I, and, you know, I haven't, I don't know who's done a meets and bounds or a title search in this thing, but I kind of, this is terrible if you ask, but come on, Brenda, let me see that thing.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm sorry.
No.
And I'm well, well aware of the, the old adage, he represents himself as a fool for a client, that's why we've got lawyers out there. Okay, let me see it. Been a fool more than once. Bring it up here, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
I want to see, I want to see the easement.
Mr. Mayor.
A recorded document, yeah.
These issues, I, I'm not, I didn't represent the planning commission when this happened. Were these issues presented to the planning commission?
No, no.
I believe Mr. Riley mentioned the easement, but I don't think he had as clear of a statement as I did, which I think is.
Let me, let me see it real quick and then, because I get where everybody's going here, I think, but maybe not. Okay, all right.
That's the easement, and then at the back, you'll see the, the map.
Oh, there's too much for me to read.
I, I highlighted the.
Oh, you highlighted what I was supposed to read? All right, I like that.
While you're doing that, I asked you.
Go.
Lee, this is a, this item went to the planning commission, and the planning commission made a decision based upon the evidence that was submitted there. And you brought it to us, for what purpose?
To, it, final approve, a, a planned unit development and, and an amendment to a planned unit development must go to the board of supervisors for approval. They, the planning commission's role was to make a recommendation to the board.
Okay, so if there are, if it arrives here and there are different facts than the planning commission considered, what are our options?
Lee, do you want me to take that? Under the Code 17.09.045, sub-paragraph five, the board shall consider the commission's report and any evidence as presented by staff and landlord. Board may continue a hearing to any specific time and may refer back to staff for further study. So essentially, with new evidence being presented, you could refer it back to the planning commission.
But can we make a decision based upon that new evidence? Can we take, take new evidence and testimony?
I, I don't think we should decide the legal impact of that lease at this time without legal looking at it and considering.
I could tell you, at the risk of, at the risk of just jumping ahead, and I know where you're going, John, I think.
I'll go there, I want to send it back.
Well, I think that's where it's got to go, because I, I read a little bit of this and I think that we need to know what the effect of this document is and who owns fee title, and I think everybody needs to know that or we're not going, we're spinning our wheels, so, okay.
May I approach?
Ah, you sure can. I like that language, that's good, that's good. You got, you're, you're scoring points, Gail, that's all right. All right, go ahead, Lee, and then.
But while everybody's here, and just to clarify with ownership, we're not, we're not disagreeing that those parking spaces are on homeowners' association property, just want to clarify where, per the recorded Governor Square final map, all those areas shaded and red up there are homeowners' association property, which includes everything except the building pads all the way to Rup Street. So, I've kind of clicked on there. Now, again, how they have their agreements as to who's maintaining what and responsible for what, maybe something internal, but that is the recorded final map, recorded in the recorder's office, and that's how the Carson City assessor shows the, shows.
Well, and I, and that map shows that the homeowners' association owns.
Everything around those properties.
Owns the fee to that, to those parking places.
Right. And, and to us, the whole thing is part of the PUD and how much, from the zoning side, we look, is there adequate parking?
I'm not, I'm not throwing stones at anybody here, listen. I think that, you know, but, but from a, from a, from a developer's standpoint, and I don't know who's all in the development group here, but, but they need to know whether or not they can even develop it, because if the easement is only, if the easement has been represented here, and the highlighted parts seem to bear that out, but I think you need to look at the whole document. You know, they may not have the ability absent what the homeowners, unless the homeowners' association tells them they can use those parking places for residents, for residents, I think, unless I'm missing something going on here.
Yeah, and I think that's, again, this being really a new presentation of this information, but from the beginning, I think this approval and concurrence of the homeowners' association with the currently commercial properties and the getting together with the CCNRs and being similar was, was the intent of that.
All right.
So, we, we agree that that should all get together and, but not knowing this, we couldn't address this issue specifically.
All right, we're going to entertain a motion to, to.
I have a question first, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go, questions, Jim, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on you.
Was it Gail, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm just entertaining this thought, and you definitely don't have to answer this, okay?
Okay.
But I, I think the homeowners' association may want to consider selling those to, for, to allow that development on the condition that maybe some type of, of features that you like going in there. You know, development of property can help, I, I know the argument is it'll raise your value, it doesn't. When you develop property, it will raise value. If you sell those parking spots to a developer on the condition he builds something of nature that you like, or maybe it can meet you, reach a halfway point, it may be beneficial for both, both property owners. Something to consider, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, let me just ask one other question, just to really clarify this. Has the developer seen this document, the easement document? Yeah, and, well, tell me how you, go forward then.
Just, just one final comment, again, Mark Turner, for the record, as I understand it, if you own a business and you have three or more rentals, that's a commercial enterprise, and, and it's, it's our intention to own those as rentals. So, it is a commercial use at that point in our interpretation of what a rental business that has three or more rentals is doing. That's, that's a commercial enterprise. So, I think that we may have to go back and, and really get down to the nitty-gritty of determining what the definition of commercial is in this particular instance, and, and we'll probably have to, to seek some counsel on that. But as we move forward, if ABC LLC or whatever the name of the company's going to be that's ultimately going to own those rentals, has three or more units, they are a commercial enterprise as classified by Carson City and have to be licensed that way with a business license. Yeah, thank you.
I, I got you, and I think, you know, rather than put this back, why don't we just table this or, until, you know, we, they can do their, unless we've got to go back to the planning commission, what's, what's the board's desire?
Let me, yeah.
Huh? Go.
Lee, as far as I know, as far as your point is, this has been to the planning commission with these facts that are the facts of record that we know of. Is that a correct statement? Could we?
With the facts that we knew of before today.
Could we make a decision on this record today and then it becomes the, the party's problem to straighten out whether they can build or not? Or is it best for them to have? Or is it best for them to have a complete deal that is viable and then bring it back to the planning commission?
Well, you asked my opinion if it's best, so I'm not, I won't offer an opinion on that, but you could, I, I think what I said, or what I tried to say earlier was that, yes, you can make your decision based on the information and facts that you have it. If there is other internal legal, I mean, that, that contract is between two private parties and, and not the city, that's, which is why we don't have it. And if, if, if that is a dealer, deal killer for the project as proposed, then the, then it doesn't go forward with the residential instead of the.
Okay, well, I think that Mark Turner's got, he's, I understand his argument. I, I don't know that, you know, that, that's a litigation issue if it gets there. So I think, I'm, board, I'm comfortable if we just say this, let's return this to the planning commission to take, to take into consideration the, the recorded easement on the property, note its effect, that gives the developers time to look at the document, time to talk to the homeowners association, time to see whether they want to ramp up legally or not, or whatever, and then we'll go forward from there. It's not trying to avoid a decision, but I think that, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to make a decision here then say, okay, go litigate it. I mean, that doesn't do anybody any good. I mean, because that's what, if you, if you, if you voted on it right now, that's what you're going to do because I got the homeowners association saying, hey, I own the property, I disagree with what they're saying. I have the developer saying, you know what, we believe.